Can't have any comment.
Okay, I have seven o'clock. I see CNET is all ready to go. Staff's ready. I'll go ahead and call to order the Tuesday, September 19th, regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors, and if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I will go to the manager for announcements with Zoom instructions and roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the Board, staff, and the public for joining us this evening for the September 19th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance virtually using Zoom platform and wish to speak on behalf of an item, agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending in person with us this evening in the main meeting room and wish to speak on an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the Zoom platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, Board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. And finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens? Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Here.
Mr. Heller?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And I'll announce that on September 18th, we had an executive session on legal and personnel matters. And I'll also announce that we have an agenda change. We're going to postpone one item, and that's new business number two, the audit presentation. Postponing that for a future meeting. And if that is that, we'll move to public input, and this is for residents that have public input on any items not currently on tonight's agenda. Yes. If you could please give us your name and township of residence.
Hi, Christine Bailey, Ferguson Township. This is mostly based about the new student building, which is in our neighborhood. On call to alleys today behind the new student building, there were three electrical trucks blocking the alley. Delivery people stop in the alley and drop food or whatever off. Visitors stop there and go into the building, leaving their cars. This alley is only 18 feet wide if you include the utility poles. The sidewalks are level with the road surface, so a part of the cartway, so there is no safety for pedestrians in using these sidewalks. People are also parking on the property next door, which is 118 South Buckout. In case anyone's interested, we found out this afternoon that on Tuesday and Wednesday of this coming week, the island, the pork chop, that was removed during traffic rerouting on College and Buckout is being replaced. My question is, is it being replaced as it was? Or will it be redesigned? Has it been redesigned as to account for the heavier pedestrian and bike traffic that's now effect? Will there be a wheelchair way in the center? CATA has now moved the bus stop on the side of the new building to the middle of the block. The one on the opposite side of College is now also mid-block. This means that people will be crossing, likely crossing three lanes of traffic with no pedestrian crossing. The space between the building, student building, and Nittany Property Management in the original plans was supposed to be a paved walkway. It is not graded right to be a walkway and has been grassed over. It is obviously a popular walkway as there's a worn path through the grass. We saw a car come into the alley at speed today, dropped off a passenger, turned around in the garage entrance, and leave again at a speed too fast for a narrow alley. The alley should be made one-way and have speed bumps on it. For cars leaving the garage, there's a squared-off piece of curb that serves no purpose that already has black tire marks across it because it sticks out into the driveway. Township maintenance, as far as weed control, is concerned, is concerning, seems to be nonexistent if the householder or business is not taking care of it. On the alley beside 1004, there is a weed patch that hasn't been cut down all summer. Been between 1004 and 1006, the same thing. 1012 has weeds growing all around it. 123 Osmond has weeds right across the pathway, and some university-owned properties are the same. On the corner of College and Howe is a derelict house. It has broken windows and creepers growing over it. Why has nothing been done about this? This has been allowed to happen, and it's been getting worse over many, many years. It's of interest to us because this is our neighborhood. The reason this neighborhood ostensibly needed to be changed was because it was blighted. It never was, but is looking blighted now because the regular maintenance is not being done by owners and the townships not enforcing whatever regulations are already in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else with comments on items not on tonight's agenda? Yes, if you could come to the podium, please give us your name and your township of residence.
Hi, my name is Sharar Azolqad, and I'm Ferguson Township President. I'm here for the storm pipe that is running through Trusha Street. And it has crack on it, and it's just like collapsing. If it collapsed, it's going to close out the street is a, next to 171 East where I am. And it's going to close the Trusha Street, and there are people and kids go to school there, and they, you know, they have to get to the Pine Grove Road. The water coming from Pine Grove Road is the stormwater and run through this pipe that it goes from Trusha Street. And they're saying that this is the private road, and there is no really record of like who is responsible for the road. I have brought it up, talked to Ron about this issue, and it's been a couple of years. And keep getting worse, and the hole keep getting bigger, and it's hazard for the people that they pass through that the street. And, and I mean, if nothing gets done, all the stuff keep falling in there, and it's going to close that, and it's going to back up the water, and Pine Grove Mill gets flooded all the time whenever there is a heavy rain. I get water, I got water in my basement last time that we had a heavy rain. And I just want to bring up that and see if there is anything can be done and to control that and to fix this problem.
Thank you. And maybe you can share your information with the manager here so we can follow up.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, any other public input from the community on items not on tonight's agenda? And I am seeing none. So we'll move forward to approval of minutes. There are two sets of minutes, September 5th, the Supervisors' Work Session, and September 5th, the Regular Meeting Minutes. Any changes to any of these? And if not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the September 5th, 2023 Board of Supervisor Work Session Minutes and September 5th, 2023 Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting Minutes.
Give me a second.
This is Matt. I will go ahead and second both of those.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, up next is Authorities, Boards, and Commission Reports, and we have a Center Area Transportation Authority report from Mr. Omari Patterson. I see Mr. Patterson on the Zoom.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Sorry I couldn't be there in person, but glad we have the technology among us to do it this way. Very, very simple authority report for today for the Center Area Transportation Authority. I guess in generic terms, all things are a go. The current Executive Director/CEO has been doing just a fantastic job for the organization. You know, getting, you know, some of the, dare I say, sins of the past kind of taken care of, you know, working with each of the townships, member townships, and then kind of the non-member townships to kind of bring everything in line, get a good costing model together. There's been some staffing changes, which have been positive. I guess at the end of the day, you know, services are running well. Lots of OT unfortunately right now, so they're still working on kind of limitation of drivers, but there's great discussions happening. Without CATA being kind of insular, there's county discussions, there's discussions with other organizations, you know, mass transit organizations to kind of see how we can be more efficient and effective with our drivers. And then lastly, we're kind of a marketing campaign so that everybody understands CATA GO, the usage of CATA GO on kind of the, those route, those kind of formerly underutilized routes, but using CATA GO for those routes and the marketing around it and the education around it. I'll pause for any questions, but organizations from the line.
Thanks. Questions from Mr. Patterson? No, no questions from us tonight.
Well, thank you. I either dazzled you with brilliance or or some other alternative, but I really appreciate you folks, your support. Thank you, Township Manager for working with the CATA CEO, Executive Director, and kind of helping on kind of that backside of, of, you know, by Ferguson leading the way, other townships are kind of taking hold of it. It's been, it's been awesome. Thank you all.
Well, thanks for your service on that committee. It's an interesting time to be a part of it, I'm sure, so we really appreciate your time and efforts with CATA. And thank you for your report.
My pleasure. Great.
Okay, we'll move to Special Reports and Acknowledgements. Under DEI, we have, this month is Suicide Prevention Month. Hispanic Heritage Month is September 15th through October 15th. Rosh Hashanah is September 15th through 17th, and Yom Kippur is September 24th to 25th. We'll move then to COG and Regional Committee Reports. HR Committee looks like was canceled this month. Do you have any notes on that, Jeremy, or just?
Nope, just next meeting next month.
Lucy Committee did meet its Community Planning Month. We discussed that. We had an update on the UAJA Put-in-Town Road Interceptor Study. There was actually a lot of input from some outside groups on the environmental factors related to that, and that, that's ongoing, so nothing decided. It was just a status update on that study. We did have a presentation from Neil Sullivan with Penn State on the Applied Research Lab 50-Year Plan. And so I don't know if anyone saw that in the agenda. It's the reason it was at Lucy and will be, I think it was also at Center Region Planning Commission, was that it'll require an extension of the regional growth boundary in super-service area to complete this plan. So it's a large, large area, I think 11 to 12 buildings of the Applied Research Lab offices and, and facilities over a 50-year period. So it's not anything that's happening anytime soon, but they do need that DRI process to move forward. So they presented to College Township, they're presenting around to different COG committees. It's of interest at Ferguson. We have a lot of the ARL facilities here in Ferguson, and so we did talk some about that. They just kind of indicated that there's been a lot of money invested in those facilities lately, and the ones that are most outdated are actually on campus, so they'd likely be the first to transition to this new area. So the impact here probably wouldn't be seen for quite some time. And just to note as well, I don't know if I'd mentioned it last time, the Jim May is retiring in November. And so with Mark Bockel also leaving, it does leave a pretty big gap over there. So just something to be mindful of as we move forward, especially with the comprehensive plan update. So questions on that committee? Okay, we'll go to Climate Action and Sustainability Committee. Jeremy?
Thank you. So we had met on September 11th. Just a couple highlights I wanted to point out from the draft specifications in the refuse and recycling contract. We just provided feedback on that. We're planning to do a request for proposals within the new, early, the first part of the new year. It looks like we would most likely be supporting a cart collection, the automated collection, where robotics would pick up the cart. A lot of the refuse haulers now have limited staff, but also there is some implications with having a driver get out of a vehicle into a roadway to pick up trash and then possibly even risk injury from the weight of the trash, so it will be a lot more safer and cost-effective for the haulers to do it that way. The bulk waste collection, there may be a possible change there. Also, these are all going to be subject to the capabilities of the hauler and what the final negotiated contract will be. But we're looking to continue maintaining about twice a year service with bulk collection. It may be reduced to like a specific area each day. The consultant is encouraging more of an advanced request of what to pick up versus just running the whole route. That way they can put in addresses in our routing software to build efficiencies and save time and cost running that. There might, it looks like there will be some restrictions on excessive bulk waste, like sure, maybe a few household items, spring cleaning, but like if you had a whole home renovation or something, they might recommend more of a one-off dumpster service, so keeping, keeping that realistic because that is a service that all of us share in the cost at the end of the day, whether somebody just throws out a couch or their whole house. Currently, the bulk waste model requires 14 trucks, 26 crew members. At-door service, like I said in the last meeting, that will be going away as an option, but those with disabilities as defined in the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 will continue to be able to get that at-door service at no cost. Christmas tree collection, we're going to try to, we're going to, we want to continue to see that in the contract, but there may be a possibility if that was outside the capabilities of a new hauler that we may need to look at additional alternatives to be able to continue collecting those Christmas trees. Right now, Waste Management uses about two crews to collect over 1,100 Christmas trees each year. The fleet will continue to be CNG. They'll have six months if they're not on CNG to convert over. And we do welcome our haulers to utilize new technologies, for an example, electric trucks. So right now, we're looking at a draft of the Request for Proposal at our next meeting. A general forum will look at it in November, and then it'll release for proposals will be in early January 24.
Questions for Jeremy?
Very thorough report. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, and I'm sure we may have additional discussions on this later as we continue down this path.
So is this, is the draft RFP coming back to the Climate Committee then next month to discuss some more, or?
So this particular month, we just looked at like a list of like 10 different items, and then next month, we'll actually see the draft document, which would then be included in that release for proposals.
Okay, so not knowing the timing of your meeting, if you have feedback on that, now would be the time to give it or to think about an email to him. My couple of comments are, I'd be interested in the price for the automated pickup because I know that was looked at last time, and it wasn't approved because of the cost, so I'm surprised that they wouldn't put manual pickup in the RFP, so just to be able to see the cost difference. So that'd be a question, unless you guys talked about that, but.
We, we have talked about it. The consultant is not recommending it, but also the, the majority of the haulers are really trying to move away from that just to manual collection because, again, limited crews, risk to injury from manual collection.
Mm-hmm, okay. And then with the Christmas tree collection, I guess I'd be curious too about what, what options we would have if they didn't continue that. So picking up by the township, or so that's, it's just a question. And I encourage that to be in the RFP to continue offering that service. And then is CNG, are most of the haulers that would reply to this using CNG or planning to, or?
I don't have that information.
I'd just be curious because if it's requiring them to convert within six months of the contract starting, I'm just wondering, I didn't know if, if they're all using it that much, or?
I know Waste Management is, there has been discussions that they can convert over with existing equipment, but also we are trying to keep in enough time to allow for them to be able to make that transition.
Okay, but you're saying it wouldn't be excluding our closer providers from submitting for this if they're?
Let me check on that. I don't have the.
Just a comment.
Start of the contract date, but yeah.
Just a comment for when you guys talk about the RFP again. So that was all I had for this, and thanks for that.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then Public Safety Committee was canceled. Finance Committee was also canceled, but I'll note that it was canceled because we have the budget meetings beginning this month. I think September 28th is the first one. And so with that, just so you know, we won't meet again prior to that first budget meeting. So I'll take in with me some of our previous discussions on where I think the board wants to go with this budget. I, I think that we're all in favor of the cap and adhering to the cap that's been set. Parks might be on that first day, and the budget should get released maybe toward the end of this week. So if you do have a chance to look at it, I'm sure there's some things from the Capital Improvement Plan that, or Program Plan that are moved into the budget as possibilities, and this would increase us over the cap, I'm sure. So if you have a chance, I would appreciate you just looking at it and giving me some feedback. You know, not just on parks, but on any of those particularly larger items or staffing requests. Just, just to me, we won't copy anybody else, so we don't violate sunshine. You can just send me your comments and just so I have some. But generally going into those meetings, I think I have a sense of where the board is at since we just had that Program Plan discussion, so. So that is that. And then Executive Committee, we did have today, and I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at that agenda. It was very short. The four items for discussion at the General Forum were all in the consent agenda, and so I pulled two of them so that we could talk about them. One was the SPPA was on there for an update, but as it said in the agenda, it indicated that the townships would be asked for an increase in the legal fees for the SPPA. And so there was, there was quite a lengthy discussion about if on Tuesday, there would be a request for a vote on that. Where we left it was no, there will not be a request for a vote because we don't have the number of how much is being requested. If the request is urgent, the school district already approved increasing the amount they'll pay toward legal fees. You know, I assume the General Forum would approve it, but it wasn't at a state today in order for the Executive Committee to move forward with that. So Tuesday, we'll have an update on the SPPA. Within that update, we'll likely have additional information on what the increased fees will be. So it's highly unlikely, I think, that we'll be asked for a unit vote on Tuesday on that. If there is some immediate need for it, I suppose there could be, but that wasn't. If there was some immediate need for it, I suppose there could be, but that wasn't indicated at all today. And the working group is meeting the next day, and they'll get that presentation. So, it was, you know, we didn't get any update on the SPPA at today's meeting, so I don't know what all will be in there, but obviously, there's been a lot of delays and increased fees. So, more to come on that. And if you have questions before Tuesday, you can feel free to reach out after that agenda comes out, and we'll see what's on there.
Did they share what was causing the increase in fees?
No, no. So, there's been a lot of discussions, I know, between the school district. Eric Norenberg at COG had just gotten off the phone with the school district to describe some of those, and so, and that was part of the question was, does this change any contracts that we've already had our solicitor review? I don't think so, but it wasn't clear enough today to move forward the same, that we could just accept that. There is a ballpark amount of $30,000, so I don't think it's a large amount that it would go up, but it does require unanimous vote. So, yeah, so, but there have been a number of delays. And the other one was on the Sustainability Institute at Penn State doing a presentation, but we're gonna have them give that to the Climate Committee first to see if there is something that needs to be presented to the General Forum. And that was really a matter of being mindful of their, of the time at the General Forum and of the members, and if there's something really pertinent to that, then have a presentation, but let it go through the committee first. And that was it for Executive.
And if I may, Madam Chair, there was one item that was not included here, which was the facilities meeting that was canceled.
Oh, okay.
And instead of having that meeting, that was when we toured the new Whitehall Regional Park and had that moment, so, yeah, it was that.
Yeah, and I attended that tour as well. It was very nice, and I do hope that that is going to go through the other committees. So, I had wanted to ask and see if other committees were, I would assume Parks Capital would get a tour, I would assume Climate. So, if you haven't, I'll, I'll reach out to Jesse at Executive Committee and ask if we can get additional tours arranged for staff and COG committees. It's different seeing it in person, so if, you know, and I'd, I'd want our staff to be able to go over there and see it too. Okay, so I'll make a note of that. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Okay, we'll move to staff reports, and up first is the manager's report.
Thank you, Chair. I will provide an extended report at the next meeting.
Thank you. Questions for manager? No? Okay, and Public Works Director's Report. I don't think we have any questions for Dave tonight. I don't see Dave online. Okay, Planning and Zoning Director's Report.
My report's included in the agenda. If there's any questions, anything specific, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for Planning? Seeing none. Chief of Police Report?
My report is included. More than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Chief? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move to unfinished business. And first up is a public hearing on an ordinance of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, amending Chapter 27 zoning, Part 7 supplemental regulations, Section 716 workforce housing by repealing it and replacing it in its entirety. And we'll go to Ms. Worgo.
Thank you. Providing the agenda's proposed ordinance amendment, Chapter 27 zoning, Part 7 supplemental regulations, Section 716 workforce housing as advertised for the public hearing. The workforce housing ordinance is applicable to the traditional town development and terrace streetscape zoning districts, and the township requires the contingency of workforce housing units to be built in both of those zoning districts. The.
Could you move your microphone? It's not here.
It's a hot mic. The ordinance amendment proposes to amend applicability, the area median income for rentals and for sale units, and add additional workforce housing options for developers. The draft has been received and reviewed by all local, regional, and county reviewers. Planning Commission reviewed the draft amendment at the September 11th regular meeting and recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comments on this item. If you could please give us your name and your township of residence.
My name is Andy Haynes. I actually reside in Holliesburg Borough, but I work at 2121 Old Gatesburg Road here in the township. I'm here to talk about the proposed ordinance. I work for a company called Gatesburg Road Development. We are an affordable housing developer that has been developing for 24 years, affordable and workforce housing across the state. I've developed 1,000 units with Gatesburg Road, both here locally and across the state. Locally, you know us for the Stonebridge Senior Apartments on Bristol Avenue, where we built 108 units of affordable housing for seniors. I also, because I do this 24 hours a day, seven days a week, it's my livelihood, but I'm, it's also a passion of mine. I serve on several advocacy groups that promote affordable and workforce housing across the Commonwealth. One is the Housing Alliance of Pennsylvania, which helps low-income homeless, special needs housing, and then I helped create and served as a longtime chair of the Pennsylvania Developers Council, which is a group of affordable housing developers and affordable housing advocates who work in the industry that promote legislation and policy and agenda. Full disclosure, my company, Gatesburg Road Development, is owned by the same ownership as SNA Homes. I've been with them for 24 years. Prior to my coming, SNA Homes back in the 80s was an early innovator of farmers' home and rural housing developments. When interest rates in the 1980s were 20%, they were working with government programs to provide low-interest loans to provide workforce and starter housing. Developing affordable housing, which I do every day and been doing it for a long time, is a complicated and tricky business. You need to have what I like to call tools in your toolbox to not only develop the housing, but also ensure that it's affordable for long-term, that it basically stays affordable, whether it's for sale or rental, for the rest of its lifespan. And based on my experience as a developer, as a housing advocate, this amendment, while noble and well-intentioned, will not provide workforce housing at all. It will actually prevent not only workforce housing from being developed, but also market-rate housing. And let me explain a few things. And I'm, I'm a supporter of inclusionary zoning and workforce housing. I believe developers should provide a certain element of their development to provide for affordable workforce housing. I think it's an important aspect we need to provide in the community. But, the way this land, this amendment is structured and written, this will not succeed because it's really based off inclusionary zoning based on larger communities. If you go to Washington DC or Northern California, New York City, Denver, Charlotte, they have inclusionary zoning processes. They have workforce housing requirement in their communities, but their developments move much quicker. They're developed over a couple of years. They develop 100 to 200 units, so they can provide workforce housing quickly. Locally, our developments take years to build out. It just isn't feasible, the amount, the churn that we're turning to compare to a larger community. Also, these communities have other tools to provide for the development. They have tax incremental financing, they have tax abatements, they have down payment assistance for the home buyers. Then they have public agencies, nonprofits, that can help with the resale provisions of for-sale housing or to maintain its affordability. This amendment doesn't provide any of that. Inclusionary zoning for this whole area is something I do a lot of research on. I've advised the Borough of State College, I've worked with College Township, I've worked with Benner Township, and one of the problems is that in larger communities like New York City and Washington DC, you don't have affordable housing options 15 to 20 minutes away. Here, you do. If you don't choose to live in Ferguson Township, you can find affordable housing in Half Moon or another township, or Tyrone, or Belfon. So, when you're putting in language in the amendment that you have here, that you're targeting 60 to 120% of area median income, and you provide, let's say, if somebody had 120% area median income buys a house for, let's just say, $350,000, but they can't resell the house to make a profit, and they have to go through various methods to resell and market the house, why would that person do that when they can move 15 minutes away to buy a house without those provisions? So, our area provides a unique challenge in promoting affordable housing and to make inclusionary and workforce housing work. Those other communities, those cities, like I said, they have financing incentives to developers to help them make the project feasible. They also give them waivers. They give them waivers on, they give density bonuses, they give waivers on stormwater fees, they give waivers on tap fees, they give down payment assistance. So, you need for these programs to work, you need financial incentives on the development side, and then you need financial incentives on the homeowner or renter side, and then you also need zoning incentives to make it more affordable for people, for, for the project to be affordable. This amendment and its predecessors don't provide any of these tools. You are simply putting the burden on the developer with very little development incentives, very little administrative support or financial incentives to make it, to make it worthwhile. And I think the success rate of local workforce housing shows. Now, this is anecdotal, but what I understand in the Borough with their inclusionary zoning process, they're getting workforce housing, they're either getting workforce units built and unsold, or the developer is paying a fee in lieu of, instead of providing the workforce housing. Outside in the center region, where I don't see any workforce housing be developed under the language that the various townships are doing, and it's not because you're not trying. We appreciate that you're trying to provide affordable housing. We all believe it's needed. All right. So, for inclusionary zoning to work, in my opinion, what you need to do is really have a mixed type of housing, okay? I, I mentioned Stonebridge Senior Apartments earlier. For seniors 62 and up, under 60, they have to make less than 60% area median income. 70% of those seniors sold their house to move into Stonebridge. They sold houses that were on the lower end of the housing value. When, and anecdotally talking to the residents, they sold them either to family members, maybe the young, their grandchildren who bought the house at a discount, or they sold it to a younger family. You need, like what I like to call is a housing ladder. The first place you move into is not a house that's $500,000, it's an apartment. Then you move to a townhouse, then you move to a starter house, then maybe you move to the hand house. Then as you get older, you become an empty nester, you downsize, or you move to a retirement community. This community doesn't have the diversity of housing. So, don't think of workforce housing that it has to be new, it can be older housing that provides workforce housing. The second thing is you need to incentivize developers, you need to give them development waivers, you need to provide them density bonuses, you need to make it more feasible for them to develop workforce and inclusionary housing. And then finally, and probably the most important thing is, you need the participation of the development community. You need to talk to real estate brokers, you need to speak to developers, you need to speak to a guy who is right down the road, who has 30 years' experience in affordable housing. I urge the supervisors to table this amendment. Let's bring in a task force of all these experienced people, and let's really figure out a solution to provide workforce housing. And I am more than willing to help in any way I can, like I said, and I'm wrapping up here, I'm an advocate of affordable housing. I believe in it, I believe it's important, and there's methods and ways we can do it that are much better than what's proposed in the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, other people for public comment. He could please give us your name and your township of residence. Thank you.
So, my name is, my name is Tony Frachtel. I live in Harris Township, but I work at Pantera Engineering, 3075 Enterprise Drive. So, we are also a business in the township. And as a civil engineering firm representing some of the developers in the room, we have worked on multiple multifamily and single-family developments in Ferguson Township, and I just want to take a minute and sort of drill down just a little bit on some of the language in the ordinance that, that we see as being prohibitive to being successful, just like Andy had mentioned. There's, like, the, the very beginning of the ordinance talks about some provisions for zoning that may allow for innovation, flexibility, diversity of economy, ingenuity in development, but those are not spelled out in, in the ordinance as written. That makes it very difficult for a developer to, to figure out, you know, they have to do a pro forma, they have to figure out what this development's going to do, how, how it's going to work, how it's going to perform, and without knowing what some of those things are, that's very, that's very difficult. So, that's like a very specific item in the, as it's written, that prohibits it from, from being successful. Some of the other things, I think, that Andy talked about, stormwater management, even if there are bonus units granted and workforce housing is allowed to increase density, things like stormwater management, traffic impacts, open space requirements, those are all still affected by the number of units that increase the cost and reflect on the, the productivity and the viability of, of a development. So, I, part of this is just to make sure that as it, as this gets written on paper, some of these things get included to be specific for what can be done and how that will affect what the, the developer can do. There's, there's also a section of the ordinance that talks about, it's very specific about existing homes. If they have structural reconstruction on the, on their lots, on their houses, then the workforce housing applies to them. Does this mean, I mean, as written, it seems to mean that if somebody puts a garage on or adds over their garage, or adds a bedroom, that the workforce housing ordinance would then be part of the, you know, it would be in effect. And again, is there a better way to do that? And we're just suggesting that maybe if we sit down and look and talk about this, there might be a better way to put this on paper and, and have it be effective for what the, you know, what the goals of the, the township are. So, that's, that's all I have to add, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, others with public comment? He could please provide your name and your township of residence. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Dock. It's, I live in College Township. I'm the CFO of SNA Homes. We at SNA Homes are not anti-workforce housing. In fact, if, if you know, we've, we developed Fox Point and the Landings, which, when they were originally developed, were workforce housing at the time. Unfortunately, with the Dartha development recently, the pricing in those developments has gotten too high for, for someone that's in that workforce housing income range, and this amendment is going to do nothing but make that even harder for people to buy a house because it's going to just continue to drive the prices up there if nothing ever gets developed. You know, notwithstanding what, what Tony mentioned, what he spoke about, and what Andy spoke about, there's a couple of things just in the actual amendment itself that are ambiguous or need to be clarified in our minds before an amendment can be passed. I'm not going to take up your time going through all those tonight. There's, there's a fair number of them. I mean, I have a couple of pages of them, as we're trying to figure out how we would even price these, but I'm just going to pick four or five and just, you know, a couple of questions, I'm not expecting answers, but, you know, just when we look at price setting, you know, it, it says that the developer sets the prices. Well, 60 to 120, 120% of AMI from one-person family to an eight-person family, that's a huge range of what you can price a house at. We, as a developer, where are we supposed to price it? Just at 120% AMI at, at eight people at the highest rate? You know, how, how is that supposed to work? You know, and also, when we're looking at it, you know, people with the same income and family number profiles, they may have different credit scores. The, the, their ability to get a mortgage, one may be able to get one at 5%, and one may be able to get one at 8%. Again, that, that's a huge range in terms of the 30% of their income that they can use to buy a house. So, you know, in, in terms of determining that, how are we going to do it? I don't, I don't know if the township looked at the fact that as a part of our, our plans going forward, we would have to put in the proposed pricing for these units. Well, in that case, the township is de facto approving a price of a house that they're going to potentially be purchasing down the road. Is that a conflict of interest? I don't even know if the township's looked into that, you know, in terms of them setting a price that, the township's setting a price that they're going to buy it at later. Just another area too, you know, the qualification of these buyers. You know, on Andy's projects, we have an outside entity that does it full-time, that does it every day. It's very difficult, and there's a lot of caveats to it. Who's going to be in charge of that? Is that going to be on the developer? We certainly don't have the resources to do that. If it is, are, are we going to be charged with the cost to do that, or are we going to be, is there going to be some kind of supplementation or, or? is there going to be some kind of supplementation or reimbursement from the township for doing that? That's a huge ask. And when Andy was speaking about being involved in drafting the process, he can speak to how difficult it is for us to qualify people and just getting the proper information. And another thing, you know, it's kind of the law of unintended consequences when qualifying buyers. Did you have any thoughts about grad students? There's a lot of grad students that would qualify in the AMI that could come in and buy these for two years, and I don't think that's the intention of it. You know, maybe it is, but I think the intention is for people that are going to live here and work here not be transient for one or two years. And as I like to say with undergrads as well, you know, where there's a will, there's a way. I don't know if that's been thought of. You know, these are the things I think that need to go into the amendment before anything can be passed. Marketing plans, you know, it says that there's standards. What are the standards? What are the mediums we have to use? Are we going to be reimbursed for the additional costs and going out and trying to find potential buyers for the workforce housing? You know, the other inherent issue that we have is, is how do we market a house? And I'm using an example here of $250,000 in Francis DeSey Brook, and the house right beside it is $500,000. How do we explain that to that person? Or how do we say, yeah, you make five grand more than this person, so you're going to pay $250,000 more for a house? You know, these are the things I think that need to be thought of, and we think that need to be thought of if one amendment can be passed. Fee in lieu, you know, it says that the board's going to set the fee in lieu. Well, is that going to be on a set schedule? Is that yearly? How is that going to be set? Is it going to be a specific mathematical calculation? You know, how is that going to be set? Is it arbitrary? It says that the fee in lieu is going to be, the fee in lieu that the developer has to pay is as the time of the approval. Well, under the current amendment, at the night of the approval, there could be a change in the fee, the fee, which in essence could change the dynamics of the project for the developer. Things like that, we think, need to be looked at. Land donation, you know, that's a, that's a great idea, right? Trying to provide opportunities for developers, but have we thought about things like appraisals? Who's going to pay for it? You know, who determines? It says in the amendment now that if an appraisal is in question, well, what's in question? There's no definition of that. You know, is that going to be an arbitrary decision? Is that going to be just a, or a supervisor's decision if the appraisal's accurate? I mean, things like that, we think, need to be more black and white in terms of providing, you know, an amendment that will work. Really, I don't want to take your time going through all these, but, you know, as a final thought, you know, SNA's been working, and I'm just using an example, SNA's been working on a plan with staff we brought in in May that would provide one hundred and twenty workforce-type housings, the same type of developments that we originally developed in Fox Point and the Landings, that would require, you know, a little bit of collaboration with the board, maybe a few variances, things like that, that could provide one hundred and twenty units of workforce housing. If you approve a plan, for example, of two hundred units, you're only going to get twelve to twenty. And I'm sure other developers out there tonight may have the exact same type of plans that they're willing to bring in. And it wouldn't come with all the regulation and cost and additional hoops to jump through where it will to market it. It would be priced in a range that would be workforce housing for this area, at, you know, ten X what we would get from a two-hundred-unit subdivision. All in all, these are just a few examples we had going through the amendment. Again, we're not asking for the amendment to be struck down or anything like that. All we're asking is that the amendment be delayed, and the board and the township work with a group of people, as Andy mentioned, you know, engineers, Andy, developers, to come up with an amendment that will actually work and actually get workforce housing developed and built in the township.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Chad Stafford. I'm here representing Carbanji Development. We also are HFL Prime Corps Fanvest, so we have a bunch of names. In this center region, we have developed some very impressive workforce housing projects, Lime Rock Terrace, Evergreen Heights, Pleasant Points. We have strived to, and we have provided workforce housing specifically in College Township. We have supplied similar workforce housing in the borough. When we did the developments in the borough and in College Township, at least the ordinance were, they were very specific as to what our restrictions were, so we could evaluate whether it made sense to move forward with the projects, to provide this. And it allows us, as developers, to be able to reach out to groups like the Pennsylvania Financing Agency, so that we can figure out how we can work to bring these workforce housing communities into the areas. And unfortunately, the way the ordinance are written currently, there's just not enough information here that a developer can move forward and make those decisions. So just like Andy and Chris and Tony had indicated, we are more than happy and want to have a workforce housing ordinance that we can go by to continue to do these types of developments. We're just asking that the board considers tabling it, really evaluating the details so that the community, the residents, oh, by the way, I am a resident of Ferguson Township for seventeen years. And just so that the whole community as a whole can expand and grow and really use this resource that the township is trying to move forward to everybody's benefit. So, thank you.
Thanks very much.
My name's Bob Poole. I live in Ferguson Township, and also we have multiple businesses in Ferguson Township. I'm not, I'm not going to repeat what's already been said. Andy, who's been with me a long time, is absolutely an expert in workforce affordable subsidized housing. I think what, just right to the point, is really asking the board to table the adoption of the ordinance amending the workforce housing section, and to form a committee comprised of a variety of people with the expertise and interest to present a workforce housing ordinance that's feasible, and it works for both Ferguson Township, the residents of the township, and the developer. I don't think there's anyone that would not be in favor of affordable workforce housing. When I started, we started as a one-lot builder, and really had three models, and everyone, most of the people we built for, in fact, almost the entire state college or police force lived in development I did through the Farm Home Administration Program, because they were not, they didn't have the affordability of a high enough income that they qualified. They basically paid about $110 a month to own home. And that's how they got there. From there, almost everyone of them continued from there to build, to build a larger home and have the opportunity. So I think, I think everyone in this room is in favor of workforce housing. There's two, there's two really major challenges that we have. One is the acceptance of workforce housing, whether it's living in the surrounding neighborhood. And the second is the financial burden placed upon the developer for subsidizing the housing. I've been doing this a long time, and it's easy to say, well, it's okay. I don't think I've ever gone to any township anywhere, and actually, we actually build things all over the country, where if you're talking about an affordable-type product, it's, we think it's a great idea, we're really for it, but it really just doesn't work right next to me. It doesn't work here, not in my backyard. And we've all heard that, so it's not something that's not there. So the problem is, is that perception is reality. We have to be able to work on a program that allows, and what that does, it hurts the value of, people, when you say perception's reality, what happens is they, they look at it and go, I'm going to be hurt by this. You have issues there about the township or owner unit. You know, most people don't want a township to own a unit next to them. Just, just to be honest with you, is that, so what I'm asking is, is that, I'm, I just request the board, along with the others who are here this evening, that the board form a committee to explore and propose an ordinance that works for everyone. And what that means is the ordinance will provide workforce housing for those who want to reside in the area and work, and financially for the developer to encourage development growth. Look, honestly, with the current proposed ordinance, we, SNA, and we've, if you look at a lot of developments around here, we would not develop in a township. It's, I couldn't, I couldn't afford to do it. I don't believe others could either. So at the end of the day, what's going to happen, you're not going to accomplish what you're trying to gain, and the end result is that we're, we will fail at what we're trying to accomplish, which is to provide housing that's affordable to people in the area. So I'd like to ask you to table, form a committee of people who understand it, who can work with your, with your staff and all, to come up with something that really works. And you'll be one of the few that can actually make it happen. When you hear Andy talking about what we do, or you hear Chad, remember, that's purely subsidized housing, it's tax credit. What you're trying to create here, and Chris had a good, he really had a good idea, I didn't actually see, most of the time they don't share this stuff with me. Actually, I had no idea what Andy was going to say tonight. But I think, I think when Chris presented that, I think you can provide workforce housing, and that's for, we call it teachers, police, whatever it is, in this area. If everyone works together and give and take, I've always said the best deals are, made my life, were the ones, I don't get everything I want, you don't get everything you want, but you do a deal on them again, because it works, it makes sense. Because if it's one-sided, we just can't do it. And that's part of why we haven't been developing some of the stuff we have around here. So we'd like to do it, we, I live here. I've lived here since nineteen eighty-five, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay. Other comment during this public hearing? Not seen any online, not seen any in the room. So if that concludes public comment, we've seen no others, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll move to board discussion. And I'll go around here if anyone had anything in particular, if staff wanted to offer anything. I have quite a number of things, and I'll say, because I wasn't at the previous discussion, I wasn't here at that meeting, when this was discussed before, so hadn't shared my thoughts at that point, so I have a list. But I, so I wanted to open it up to anybody else, board, or if staff needed to respond to anything, that's fine. If any board members had anything they wanted to share first. Jeremy, I'm fine starting, I just, I know, I didn't want to monopolize the conversation.
Need a moment to process all this. I, I would say I would, at your discretion, I would defer to any staff comments that there might be, and I would be curious to hear what you have. We'll go from there.
Okay. And I, and, oh, yeah, Corey, and then Matt, and I'll say, you know, my comments are kind of separate from the public input tonight, so we could even go back to that at the end, if that makes sense. So I'll go to Corey next.
So I'll start with a question to staff. It's my understanding that this only applies to projects that have ten or more units. Is that correct?
That is correct. So if you are proposing to add an apartment above your garage, this ordinance does not apply to you. It's if that home has ten units in it.
And I'll say, just kind of on the tail of that, there's a lot of information probably available about the memorandum of understanding with the Center County Land Trust, who administers the program.
Correct. And that will need to be updated now that we do have workforce housing units being proposed in the township. That was a general MOU. It got us Ferguson Township the seat on Center County Housing and Land Trust. That helped with this amendment, along with College Township, really to ensure regional collaboration and try to get our ordinances as close as possible, because College Township also utilizes Center County Housing and Land Trust to administer their program. And they have recently twenty-eight workforce units built. I believe seven are available right now, so the rest have been leased up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just share, in conversations I've had with other managers, the borough manager or college township manager, are, this ordinance is not too different than what they have. And so part of this amendment is to bring some of the provisions aligned with what we are seeing in the region. And I, you know, I just want to acknowledge that we'd be happy to engage the developers in future discussions. There, I had not received any outreach or invitation for a discussion, so I just want to acknowledge that.
Thanks.
So if I, if I understand correctly, this is aligning the center region a little bit more closely to what others are doing in the region. It's not too far-fetched, because I heard some of the developers mentioned that college, for instance, was rather specific in some of their language, et cetera, which made it easier. So I just want to understand maybe that.
There are nuances between our ordinance and college township's ordinance right now. I will say that this amendment we are leading only because of the AMI numbers that we received from HUD this summer really was the catalyst for us to amend this. College Township is currently amending theirs, and it will be closer to what we are seeing tonight. They have different applicability, they don't have, and they offer, I believe, additional density than we do.
Thanks. Okay. So again, we can come back to some, I know we're still thinking a bit, maybe about public input, so we can come back to that at the end, and I'll just go through my comments that aren't really related to that, and they're, as I said, I wasn't here for that previous discussion, so just wanted to get some clarity on a couple of items and maybe discuss some. And I'll start with the AMI change. So there is one change for for-sale units, and a different change for for-rent or leased units. Okay. So the for-sale units will be available to those with a sixty percent to one hundred and twenty percent AMI.
Correct.
And that's for for-sale units. The for-rent units, or leased units, will be available to those with a zero to eighty percent AMI.
Yes.
Okay. And can I just get some information about that?
So that's what we've learned with the last land development submission, where workforce housing units will be provided. This ordinance, or current ordinance, I guess, really didn't consider rentals in that aspect. We assumed that the developers would pay the fee in lieu, because at the time, we had a lower fee in lieu. Construction costs have gone up. Our fee in lieu is based on factual data provided from building code, as well as Realtors, Center County Realtors that sit on the land trust with me, that goes into our fee in lieu, which held up in our zoning hearing board case as well. It is based on factual data. But for example, the AMI provided by HUD, one-person household at eighty percent AMI, their rent, and this is with utilities included, at eighty percent AMI is fourteen hundred a month. And I don't know if anyone's looked at apartments recently, that's pretty much market rate. And that was really the catalyst for this change. That's why we're capping the rentals at eighty.
So I guess I'm interested in the low, in the no bottom, so the zero percent, because that really takes it away from the intent of workforce housing, brings it to low income or very low income, which is okay, if that's what the board wants to do, but I think it needs to be separated at this point and acknowledged as such, because I think it's, I don't want to be misleading in what this is. So that's my comment there. It is really a separation of these. I think, I was on the planning commission when the ordinance went through. Jeremy, I'm not sure if you were on the planning commission and it originally went through. So we did have many, many of these discussions about the likelihood of actually seeing these You know, and, yeah, so this was, you know, board-directed at the time, the way this is all laid out. So I am appreciative of that change in the AMI for the for-sale units. And I'm not saying that there shouldn't be a different AMI for, for leased units. My point is that it's a different intent than workforce housing then, so.
So what we've done in College Township really, because they also have a cap, and that's where we got the cap from, working with college on our amendment. So essentially what we have done, and it's really the Aspen Development up on the hill coming out on college. it's up to the developer. We, as the land trust, we don't say, you need to have so many at forty percent, so many at fifty, so many at sixty. It's as the applications come in, their qualifications are vetted, they just need to be below eighty. And it's a choice of the developer, who they put in there. And actually, what we found with Aspen specifically, they aren't pushing that top range. They are actually providing housing to lower incomes, even though they have higher applicants, let's put it that way. And we are really getting a nice range of residents in that development, from professors at Penn State, I couldn't believe the applications that we got for that, where they qualified, to a manager at a local big box store. I mean, it's amazing.
Well, so, what you're saying, so what is in the College Township?
I believe, and do not quote me on this, they have a bottom and top range. For us, we just capped it at eighty, and we're leaving the rest up to the developers to vet.
So why do they have the bottom, and why wouldn't we?
They have, that was from their original ordinance, and I would say it hasn't been touched in over ten years. So they are looking to change that.
To zero?
They will be messing around with the AMIs as well. Those numbers that came out from HUD were a big eye-opener for planners and the, we call them houseers of the nation.
I'm not sure that it's confirmed that College will have a zero, that the, that the, you know, the spectrum will be zero to eighty. They, they very well could set it at twenty or thirty. It is unknown at this point, and there's no confirmation as to what they're doing with that particular amendment.
Okay. And then we'll move to the zoning districts. So, this will now apply to all zoning districts?
Where we permit ten or more units.
Okay.
So density needs to be there, so this would never be applicable out in RA, AR, stuff like that.
So the one thing I would suggest is adding that language. That was in the county's memo, to ex, to exclude those districts that aren't related, they're not relevant, because they wouldn't allow that from, to, so you're not creating a conflict there with the language. So I would suggest having that in there, instead of all zoning districts, following the county's recommendation in that letter, would be a suggestion. Uh, and then I was interested in the discussion that may have been had about designating existing units. And I saw the planning commission had maybe some discussion about allowing outside of Ferguson Township designated units. Were they in support of that? What was the, what was the thought there? You know, I'm not entirely, because I'm appreciating the way the regional and county conversation is going, because as, as was said, you know, you can drive fifteen minutes, and you know, there's different opportunities. So I'm not opposed to something conditionally allowing some of those outside of the township uses, which wasn't considered at the time when this originally came through, for obvious reasons, but giving, I'm, I'm just saying that I'm not entirely opposed to that, and I was wondering what other conversation there was around it.
Staff-wise, and I will say regional planning staff-wise, we are all on that same page. We would love to have that ability, but it takes collaboration and cooperation from all the municipalities, because if we have a developer, it's required to provide ten workforce units here, and they want to put it in the regional growth boundary in College Township, there's nothing in College Township, they're going to look at their ordinance and be like, well, you have to provide us workforce housing. So that was kind of the stopping point for us. That is really a bigger discussion at the regional level. I think planner, planning-wise, planning commissions, we all recognize this is a regional issue, and having that flexibility to put it anywhere within the regional growth boundary is amazing. But it would take a lot of cooperation and collaboration with all of the municipalities.
You know, and at the time, like I said, when this was written, there just wasn't an appetite for that discussion, I guess, from the board, and I can't recall where it was on the planning commission, where, where we left that, you know, we're advisory, so, uh, I don't remember, but, um, I think it might not be a bad time to pursue that, given the county study that just came through, and even considering the active transportation plan that's moving through. I think there are a lot of elements that would support looking at that, and I, I would like to see us explore that in, in our ordinance. So I'd, I'd be interested in the rest of the board's opinion, and again, I wasn't here for the previous conversation, so maybe you, if this is a rehashing, I'm not sure, but, and I apologize for that if it is. I guess I'll just take the temperature on folks about that part of the conversation.
First. If you have comments on that, I have some other.
Yeah, I, one observation I've made, in my five years between planning and here, we've talked about inter-municipal cooperation, but it doesn't seem to happen. What is holding that back? I would like to see workforce housing actually built, so that residents can be able to live here, should they want. But also, I'd like to see a pricing structure that would qualify younger professionals, and those in entry-level jobs, that are to be able to benefit from this program, instead of having to relocate way outside the area, or even outside the state altogether, because they can't find housing to match their entry-level job here. That's all I have to add.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I know a lot of the conversation too, around fee in lieu speaks to that, and that was maybe also part of the conversation around what kind of, uh, for leased-built units would we actually get, and will we end up with more fee in lieu than we were counting on? And the benefit, you know, this is really what I would have been in favor of, is, you know, the additional fee in lieu, and structuring more of a first-time homeowners program, home repair programs, things like that, where those folks are actually gaining equity, and it's, uh, you're not, you know, providing somebody with lower rent, or, you know, a, a limited time in a house, and then they're, they're leaving the township. You know, we're actually investing in folks that could stay, you know, develop their, their homes or equity, their, their lives in the township. So that's, so I'm, and have been a big proponent of fee in lieu, so that we could get some of the, um, those other programs established, so. So that part of it, you know, I'm, I'm very much in favor of, and as it limits the actual, uh, built units, you know, I, I understand we need units, but I don't see it as, as a cost. I see a real benefit to getting that fee in lieu, if it's, uh, if there's a program executed fairly. And, um, and I think with the, the Housing and Land Trust, we can do that, so. So that's kind of where I am on incentives and getting built units versus fee in lieu.
And a lot of this is really a policy discussion that the board will have. We never actually have ever gone that far after adopting amendments for workforce housing ordinance, because the two zoning districts where it was applicable, the one plan was denied not too long ago, or rescinded the approval, and we have our first one right now. So a lot of that is policy discussion. What does the board want to do with that fee in lieu? That is completely within the realm of the board to set that policy for the land trust to then apply.
So I'll open, that was kind of my list, you know. I could go on and on, because like I said, I was on the planning commission when this originally came through, and there, there was no lack of, uh, debate and conversation through this, and, uh, you know, and this is an amendment, um, to that existing ordinance, so.
Uh, additional information is that College Township, their ordinance, their rentals are capped at sixty-five. They have no basement.
Okay, so it's zero to sixty-five for the, okay. And they can, they're call-it-all workforce, okay? Okay, Corey?
So my next question for staff is, I think there's, there was a lot of comment tonight about, if I can make it more simple, about carrots and sticks. And, uh, as I'm reading the ordinance right now, it feels like a whole lot of sticks, and not that many carrots. Could you point out some of the carrots to me that you think are there?
Sure, so for every workforce unit being built, whether onsite, offsite, or designated in another unit, you get a bonus market rate unit for each workforce housing. We provide flexibility, depending on what zoning district you're in. We recognize that there are requirements within our PRD ordinance. For open space and parkland requirements, we provide flexibility for those, um, PRDs that are providing the workforce units, um, a decrease in that open space requirement, because we get a, there's a lot to fit in, especially with stormwater. We never wanted to touch stormwater, planning and zoning staff-wise, that's a very hot topic. And, uh, we did not want to provide that. Uh, we provide flexibility in our buffer planning requirements, if you're within the PRD. And then we also have diversity standards in the traditional town development, where we provide the flexibility, um, for the developer, um, to place the units, essentially within the development, provide, uh, the workforce units. For multifamily units, you do not need to provide parking for the workforce units. We recognize that these units are built within the regional growth boundary. There's cat service, and we'll have public transit for that. And a lot of these are already in the existing ordinance. Let's see, we do have for multifamily dwellings, uh, they may exceed the maximum height of the underlying zoning to, for those bonus market rate units. And that is one thing that I know the board had talked about with the Terrace Streetscape discussion, but that is a flexibility that we allow. If they are opting to provide those units, onsite, offsite, designated in another building, we do allow additional floor for those bonus market rate units. Let's see. And then we allow flexibility for the options that we have provided. So we recognize that each developer is different, whether they're national or local. They may have land bank, they may have a bunch of fee in lieu, they may have other units in the township that they want to designate. So we don't say it's all fee in lieu or nothing, or you have to build it, or whatever. It's really up to the developer to pick what option works best for them. And I think that's probably the biggest flexibility that we have provided for them.
Thank you.
Comment, discussion?
There's the button. I always appreciate a good discussion here, and I appreciate the developers coming out. We've heard from five different developers this evening on the need to go ahead and take another look at this. And staff has done a good job, I think, this evening, of also giving the other side of the coin, you know, showing those carrots and having us understand that. So at this point, knowing that it aligns a little bit more closely to the region, and what others have experienced in the region, and things that they've learned in their experiences in the region. I'm, I'm not going to share my, my thoughts yet on, you know, saying yay or nay to postponing the ordinance, but I think this, tonight was a good example of hearing from both sides of the coin. So I just want to thank the developers and also staff for that.
Thanks. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm mindful of my, uh, my newness to this conversation, uh, as an appointed board member, and the history that two of my colleagues have, and so I'm, I am, I am interested in hearing more about your feedback. I think my concern rests with, with unintended consequences. And some have been brought up by the developers tonight, and some we might not have even discussed yet, that we'll encounter if we were to adopt this. I think that there are also things that... I, my, I think my growing concern is that ultimately, we all do want the same goal, which is affordable housing within the borders of our township. There are many things that are driving that, uh, out of our region, uh, that this particular ordinance doesn't address. For example, uh, there is a, and I'd be interested if staff has any numbers on this, that we have any number of units that are not, uh, that are second homes, right? That are not, uh, occupied full-time. That, well, we'll call them what they are, that they're football residences, because I see the lights on, and the one that is, uh, invisible from my house, uh, and when they're, when they are on. That there, there are things like that, uh, that, and the Airbnb rentals that also feed into that, that this ordinance won't take care of, right? And so I guess my concern is, is that as we are, we are doing things that we're hearing tonight from our development, local development community, that will cause them to not build more housing. That was said explicitly, um, in our township. My, that, that worries me, um, because, uh, part of, part of, part of, part of it is just supply and demand. But even if we were to pass this, and developers were to build using it, some of the, some of the things that I think are driving, uh, up our housing costs and prices, this, this won't address.
I'll go to Jeremy, if you want to say anything.
Or a comment?
I think Corey brought up some good points. And another thing that was coming to my mind, I, I believe it would be in the best interest of the township to try to encourage more of our workforce to live here, for the benefit of our tax base, uh, which my understanding hasn't really fluctuated too much within the last several years, and let's face it, when it comes budget time, the money's starting to get a little bit tight around here.
Thanks, great comments, everyone, and, and I guess that is along the same lines as what I was thinking. You know, just build, allowing people to build that equity here within the township, and, and make those, uh, you know, long-term plans and, and develop some roots here without, uh, knowing they may need to leave at some point. I mean, there was a lot of public input, and I very much appreciate that. It gives us a different perspective, and additional information to consider. I'd be in favor of looking at this further. The one thing too, that I mentioned was, um, with the, um, designating, um, existing units, and possibly also some other elements of that, being able to look, uh, region-wide and, and see where we can go with that. So I'd be in favor of, uh, either tabling this, or, um, it is a public hearing, so we'd need to, uh, table it at this point, uh, for future discussion, and we could even have another agenda item, on what that discussion needs to be. We could, um, come back here together, and, and with, Patty's not here tonight, so get, uh, you know, her thoughts as well, and, and, um, really do our best to avoid what you stated. Those unintended consequences, you know, that's certainly not the goal here. So, okay, so we need a motion to table. I'm looking at our parliamentarian, everything?
Yes, I, a, a motion to table the item, uh, for a future meeting. And if you're looking to have that conversation, I would say the earliest would be the second meeting in October, possibly the first meeting in November. It certainly would give time for me to, for staff and I to reach out and, and see if there's interest in having a discussion.
I would think November would be timely, yeah, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
First, in the, thinking about unintended consequences, staff, if we were to table this, does this affect you in any way in the short term?
I would anticipate a lot of land development plans to be submitted to be this ordinance.
Yes.
That would be the unintended consequence. Buzzer beaters, is what I like to call them.
Folks, we can't hear you, as you talk amongst yourselves, unless you talk to those microphones.
Thank you.
You know, and it's getting a little frustrating, I'll be honest with you. You know, I hate to be so vocal.
Appreciate the feedback, thank you. Thank you. So yeah, so there'd be, you know, there, there could be, people wanting to take advantage, but there could be, um, in other ways as well, so. there could be in other ways as well, so. So if someone cares to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that item one in section 10 of the agenda packet be tabled.
Thank you, do we have a second?
This is Corey, I have a second.
Thank you. And I'll ask the manager if you'd prefer a roll call for this, is it's a public hearing or a voice vote, it's fine.
A voice vote's fine.
Okay, any other discussion? And if not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you, so this item is now tabled for a future agenda and to be discussed probably at least once before a new public hearing would, would be scheduled. Okay, anything else on that before I move on here? Seeing nothing.
Can we just say thank you? I think it's well worth discussion, that's just, we appreciate it.
We appreciate the public comment on all items and, and items not on tonight's agenda, so it's always appreciated. Okay, we'll move to continue discussion and authorization to advertise Terrace Streetscape zoning district ordinance amendment, and we'll go back to Jenna Worgo for that item.
Thank you. Provided in the agenda are the draft ordinance amendments, chapter 22 subdivision land development, part 5A design standards for development in Terrace Streetscape District, and chapter 27 zoning, part 304 Terrace Streetscape District. Based on the feedback received during the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting on September 5th, changes to the zoning ordinance include reducing the permitted maximum height to 35 feet for the zoning district with no incentives provided for additional height. Specific requirements for applying the design guidelines to development have been added for alterations and expansions. Also included within the agenda language are the four name options that were presented to the Board and Planning Commission at the June 14th joint meeting, and those are West College Corridor, Neighborhood Mixed Use, West College Mixed Use, and Town Center.
Okay, thank you. So, all the changes, as Jenna just noted, were incorporated, including keeping that existing boundary, I know that was an item of discussion. And so the last couple of items to discuss tonight, like Jenna just said, are the, the name of the zoning district, and I've had a number of other suggestions emailed to me that I'll share, so we have a wide range of, not, I won't say a wide range, they're all pretty, pretty similar. It's a pretty narrow range, but a lot of suggestions, so to decide on the name. And then as well, we'll go back to the workforce housing ordinance. We had opted to limit the height at 35 feet, acknowledged that in the workforce housing ordinance, there is a, an extra story incentive there, so tying that back to that, we could put in the motion to, to also amend that as well, so if somebody cares to do that. So I'll just, we'll go to, well, first I'll ask, did anybody see anything that was not included that should have been? Okay, we'll discuss the names here briefly, and after that discussion, we'll go to public comment, because we'll probably need some public comment on the names after we get to this list. So, we have the four that Jenna read, we have West College Gateway, West College Neighborhood, Renaissance District, West College Corridor, West College Neighborhood, already said, West College Community District, West College Mixed Use Community, West College Corridor Community, Ferguson East Community District, West Side Village District, West End Village, West College Village District. I did like the idea of village, but it's going to be too confusing with our current zoning for village, so that's unfortunate, because I think that would have been a nice, a nice cohesive kind of title for that area, but I think community, neighborhood. We had talked about not using a geographical identifier in this, so it could be used elsewhere, but the more I think about it, the more I think it's just, it's such a unique area, I just can't imagine that any time in the near future, it's going to be recreated. There's, the only other area really that seems likely to evolve in this way would be the office commercial, and I just, I don't know if we need to kind of rein in this, the zoning district name for this area because of some potential. I think, I think this might be a one and done type of area, so I'm definitely not opposed to using West College in the name, because that's what everybody says, it's either West College or Hoult, so, you know, I don't think we can put Hoult in there, so I think West College.
I definitely have some thoughts, and one of the ones, I like Town Center, a little, you know, a little pizzazz on it, Town Center, C E N T R E, would be even a little better. And if I may, what we could do is if we adopted something like Town Center, is have it appended at the beginning with the location, like the current building we'll say is near Osmond, so Osmond Town Center. If maybe something opens up on Gatesburg, maybe it's Gatesburg Town Center, but the Town Center sticks there to stay with the zoning itself, and no matter where the location is, or how it's appended. Just a thought.
Okay. Corey, Jeremy?
I'm one of the votes for stripping geographic titles from the names, so I'm neutral if that's the way the rest of the board wants to go on.
What would be your preferred name then?
I was fine with like Neighborhood Mixed Use.
Okay.
Jeremy?
My suggestion, West College Community Corridor, though I have taken into consideration about removing some of the geographic names, but understanding the sentimental value of this neighborhood to our residents, many of which are here in attendance tonight, I am willing to support a proclamation or some type of officiation to make whatever name they want their neighborhood to be official and permanent.
Appreciated. Okay, anything else the board wants to discuss before I open it up to public input? Because really, the name and then that workforce housing element are, are the two kind of lingering items we have here. So I'm going to go ahead and open up to public comment, and we'll go in the room first. Anybody with, who'd like to speak on this item, if you could come up to the podium and give us your name and township of residence?
Christine Bailey Ferguson. My preference, and my husband's also, is West College Neighborhood.
Hello, Jen Burkubal, Ferguson Township. I support West College Corridor or West College Neighborhood. Can I ask the board a clarifying question? You had mentioned keeping, maintaining borders, is that, or I forget exactly what you said, but my question is, are you hoping to keep the borders as they are now, or as they were proposed by the consultant at the last meeting?
As now, as they are now, and I'll just look back over to staff to confirm that, because the one little indication had been that extra block?
Yeah, so the extra block towards Buck Out, going into the borough, the reason why we included that in, there was only one owner occupied house in that block, and she actually requested to be included in Terrace Streetscape, the rest were rentals, and their property owner did not have an issue with it, that's why that was originally proposed, but the current ordinance is the existing boundary that is not changing.
And not including that, okay.
Correct.
Yes, thank you for that clarification, and I, which is that I support the board's recommendation for the 35-foot building height limits with no height incentive, so however that could work into the workforce housing ordinance, and then I support keeping the boundaries as they are, so, thank you.
And you said West College Neighborhood or?
Or Corridor.
Or Corridor, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to count you for a vote for each one, okay, West College Corridor. Okay, other, oh yes. I forget what yours, your preferred name was.
Eric Schmoll, Ferguson Township. I like the West College Neighborhood or West College Corridor as well, and I just want to also say, I support keeping the boundaries as are.
Thanks very much. Okay, others for public comment here in the room before we go to Zoom? Well, I'm just checking in the room real quick first to make sure there's nobody else here, I'm not seeing anybody else, so yes, we can go to you, Rhonda, if you want to give us your full name and residence, township of residence, please, thanks.
Okay, my name's Rhonda Stern, and I live on North Buck Street, which is now part of the T S D District, and we're still discussing the name, right?
Correct, yeah.
Right, okay, I might have that connection there, here, and I'm sorry. I, I think that whatever name we decide on should be able to be referred to in one or two words, like the Highlands, or Park Forest, or if we get too many, like Corridor, I think that it's just too many words. I'd like to propose just maybe the West Side, which is kind of cool, and it could still be like the West Side, somebody had suggested individual street names or something. So, and I know we could call it the East Side if we were referring to Ferguson Township, but I think we're all sort of orienting ourselves towards downtown, and this being West College. This is, by the way, just the last few days is when I even heard about the name, so I guess the other thing I would like to suggest is that we have a little time to brainstorm. I'm not sure if you're planning to decide on this today, or you're still in the process of taking, you know, potential names, so if you could let me know that, that would be great.
Thanks, we are hoping to decide on a name, we talked about it at the couple of joint meetings we had with the Planning Commission, and had, and at the last Board of Supervisors' meeting, and just had not been able to settle on one yet, so we kind of gave ourselves this timeline, this deadline to decide.
Can the West Side be one of the options?
Yeah, I'm making a list here, and then the board will discuss, so West Side, okay. Thanks very much.
And I don't think there's many people, I, I know that we should know, because we should attend all the meetings, but obviously I don't, I still think that maybe something should be given out in the mail to the people that live here, that we would be informed that that's, this is happening, so.
Thank you, okay, others online here, see Pam, if you want to go ahead and unmute and give us your full name and township of residence?
Pam Steckler, and I live in Ferguson Township. I, I, I had a lot of thoughts about this, obviously, I said too much names. I sort of ended up, I, I didn't quite catch, it still sounds, the sound is still kind of garbled, you mentioned something about, I was really feeling good about West End Village, and what was it that you said about Village, why you couldn't use that in the, in the name?
We have a Village zoning district already that's in place in Pine Grove Mills and further out in Pennsylvania Furnace.
So they're designated as Vil, Village Zoned, could, we still, couldn't we just use that as the name? I mean, if it's, if it's West End Village, do you think that it connotes that zoning?
I do, and I'll look to staff for comment on that, but to me, it, it's too, it's too close, but I'd look to staff for feedback on that, I don't know.
I don't have a comment, I mean.
What, what was that?
I don't really have a comment to utilize Village, I mean, not just Village, we would need something else, but.
Right, because we have a Village District, so this, if we were to use Village, we would have to have maybe a geographical, or, you know, we'd have to have some other distinction in there, I guess I'd, you know, want your opinion on using that.
Oh, so you mean like West End Village District, is that what you're saying?
As long as there's something else, it can't just be Village zoning district, because we already have a Village zoning district. So if we want to do West End Village zoning district, that is fine, West College Village.
Okay, and we'll go to the, go ahead.
So if it was just straight West End Village, you'd have to add something to that, is that what you're saying?
Nope, West End Village is fine.
Oh, okay, well, that's, that's my vote.
Okay, thank you.
Because it connotes Village and a little warmth of neighborhood, without a big long word like Neighborhood, and West End, I think, as a single word with the capital W and capital E, I think that would kind of set it off a little bit from West College Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Would, would make it, at first I was feeling like East Ferguson might be something that we should consider to, to separate us from the borough, but then I thought, everybody knows where we are, we're, we're on the west end of town, and I, I've always told people that's where I am, so I, I like West End Village, I think it's kind of my sound, sort of like the West Village in New York City.
Thank you.
How about it?
All right, thank you. Okay, I want to go to the manager, because I think you had some comment.
Well, I was just, I would say that it's the West College Corridor, and we have the Western end of Ferguson Township, and so I would just give a little consideration about the, using that language.
Technically, this is the western side.
Ferguson Township.
Exactly, yeah, that's what I was. Whitehall Road is the western, southwestern side.
Exactly, so, yeah, I would not want to say western.
So I would caution you to use that, I mean, I don't want to say that it, it isn't still an option, it just could create confusion.
Yeah.
To call it West Side.
Yeah.
But it's a great name.
Yeah, okay, but I agree, I agree, I'm just kind of along the same lines as I was concerned by using Village. But yeah, I think West End is just, we refer to our west, the western portion of our township as, as the West End, all right, so, so that would be difficult, okay. So let's pause on this for a minute, let's go back, was there, was there any other thing that we needed to discuss on this item? We've had a lot of public input? No, okay.
So I see the boundary included in the agenda packet, and I, I am in support of that boundary staying as is.
Yeah. Agreed.
I didn't turn my mic on, I'm just, it's a part of the current boundary.
Okay. So if there was board comment?
Can I say one more thing?
We'll come back to public comment in just a minute, so I want to go to board comment, anything not name related, we'll go back to general comment now, general public comment, and then we'll finalize that name decision, so, general comment on the agenda item?
None.
Thank you. General comment?
I'm, I'm fine with the boundaries as they are currently listed. I hope we are open in the future to extending them as this corridor grows. I think that there will be opportunities for that, but it's fine the way it is now.
Right, I think that, you know, I think the parameters that are set in place right now, seeing how things evolve over the next number of years, I think will, will allow future boards and residents to, to, you know, observe what happens, what develops there, and, and make changes as needed, so I'm comfortable with that. Okay, so let's go back to in the room, any comment on non-name? Items, okay, I'm not seeing any, so we'll go back to Rhonda first, and then Pam, so Rhonda, go ahead. You're muted, so if you want to unmute.
All right, can you? All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The word Corridor, I know that was one of the options. That does not feel like a place name, it feels like a street name. So it, it feels, you know, I've lived here 34 years, or actually more in Ferguson Township, but in this area that long. It just doesn't sound like a subtle place, it sounds like a place to get from here to there. So I really prefer something like the West End Village or the West End or the West Side, something like that as compared to Corridor as a name. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks Rhonda, and we'll go back to Pam.
Actually, I agree with you, Rhonda. Corridor sorta makes it sound like not a place to go to, but a place to go through. So I definitely agree with Rhonda on that one. I had a question in terms of the boundaries. It occurred to me looking at the map that it gets substantially wider on the east side of Coral Street. And it seems like it would, would kinda make sense to stop it at Calder. It just, you know, if you look at the map and if you know what's where, if it ended at Calder, then it would almost be like a straight shot through. And would that then, the part between Calder and Harley, would that then become R2?
That is possibly neighboring R2 there, I'm not sure. There was some discussion on, on making the boundary smaller, and that wasn't preferred by the majority of the board, as I recall the conversation. And so that's how we landed on just keeping the existing boundary with the other changes, and I'll let staff speak to that.
So the consequence of decreasing the boundary in certain areas is that we end up with a lot of non-conforming structures and uses. And to find a zoning district that would be applicable is really the biggest issue. And I believe what I recall from the last meeting, once the height was dropped to 35 feet max, the board felt comfortable leaving the boundary as is.
Well, is, okay, is everything that's surrounding Harley R2?
I believe everything around T S minus the golf course is R2, and then we get into R1 over towards Waffle Shop.
No, 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 I'm talking about Harley. Harley doesn't go that far.
Directly about.
Harley's opposite Coral, so from, it would be Butts to Coral, those three blocks.
Directly.
Doesn't everything around that, isn't everything that surrounds that R2?
Directly about entire streetscape in that area is R2.
So if it was bumped to Calder, then that could just become R2, become a part of that?
We have a lot of uses that are not permitted in R2 that are currently in those blocks, which is why we recommended leaving the boundary as is.
Oh! Well, what's there now, Williams Brothers is gone. So what else is there?
When we did our land use review as well as grabbing permits, we had a few of those home occupations in those areas. We still have the active permit for the one business you just mentioned. So really, the concern was legal implications of making that change and what that does to those properties.
So it was only that, so was that the only one in question, was Williams Brothers? It's been, it's been empty for more than a year, I think.
I'll just say, cuz I wanna kinda move on from this, cuz we already decided that portion of this. There, I would recommend just going back and listening to those conversations from the board and also from the joint work session with the Planning Commission, those couple of meetings. There was a lot of discussion about the boundary that probably answered some of those questions. So I'd, I'd recommend both of those. So at this point, I'd like to go back to the name, make a decision, and then take a motion. So we have all of our public input, we have some board input. What I tallied, I guess I only had Cory's name as neighborhood mixed use. I didn't hear Jeremy or Matt. I mean, I liked, like I said, I liked the Village idea because I think this does mirror a little bit what we have, what we provide for in our, our existing Village Districts. I actually don't think it's that off. I think same West College, West College Village District is okay. So Matt, or Matt and Jeremy, last thoughts here.
Yeah, I mean, we heard, by my tally, West College Neighborhood was winning three to nothing else. That was before the Village Conversation got involved. And then now is West College Village potentially leading the mix? Can we do like a show of hands in the audience, or?
And I think, you know, neighborhood mixed use, I, I like that as well. My problem with mixed use is, I don't know, I'm just, I'm worried about it. Not aging those, I just, I just think, you know, we tried mixed use, trying to go for a completely different idea. But, but I'm, I actually don't think that's a bad one, neighborhood mixed use. So I'm kinda, kinda between that one and West College Village.
West College Village.
So West College Village, neighborhood mixed use, I voted for both. And Jeremy, what's, what's your thought?
I was the one with a completely different name, well, somewhat completely different name. Definitely wanna be mindful of the resident input here. So, yeah.
What was your suggestion or preferred?
West College Community Corridor, but.
West College Community, isn't that, okay. And then staff preference, put you on the spot.
From what's provided there?
Sure, yeah, we'll, we'll narrow it down to that list. From that or the other couple of suggestions we have here, West College Village.
I'll, I'll go ahead and put our Assistant Township Manager on the spot, who recently purchased a home right behind the T S D, and I'll give him the floor.
Okay.
Thanks for putting me on the spot.
You're welcome.
My suggestion is West College Hall, because it's like, takes the place of Corridor, it's a hall. You also can shorten it to College Hall, and then you don't have the west in there that is the orientation, so I'm just covering all bases there.
Well, I didn't know he was adding anything to the mix. I like that, and one other that, that reminded me of was West College Quarter. Quarter, not corridor, so like a quarter, you know, like an area. So really, instead of, you know, district, it'd be, you know, synonym of district. So West College Quarter, West College Hall. That didn't help.
Sorry.
That didn't help us narrow it down. So we're just gonna have to take a vote here.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just add from knowing my choice is out, because I also would rather defer to the residents of the neighborhood, that I, I would avoid Village again, because I think there could be confusion with our existing Village District. And my sense is, is that our original goals for this zoning was to make something more urban, which for me is not what I think of when I think of the word Village.
Urban.
Interesting point, okay. Okay.
So if I had to pick from the ones that are being discussed, I would go with West College Neighborhood.
Okay. Go back to Matt.
I like having a community of villages, it resonates with me, being from Pine Grove Mills and having a village there. Hearing, I think Village also takes in both the West College side that we heard from every resident, you know, either online, I believe everyone online and in person. And just changing the fact that we're going from neighborhood to Village would be something I'd be for. So I'm for West College Village.
I'm just pondering our capabilities and flexibilities of possibly extending the public comment time on the naming to provide opportunity for more residents to weigh in, whether that be through email or writing, but.
No, I hear you, I think we just, I think we'll probably be in the same place if we extend it. So it's, it's not easy, because there was, you know, it's, as I say, it's a unique area. All of the general names are taken, and, you know, we've tried to identify this as a number of different things. So if we want to broaden it beyond neighborhood mixed use, I mean, I kind of think that that makes sense, you know, but I'm, if we wanna do West College Village, if the majority of the board is supportive of that, I think it distinguishes this as a separate area. I'm still a little bit hesitant about reusing that Village. Yeah, West College Neighborhood.
Aye.
West College Neighborhood Mixed Use. We can, we can shorten it to anything.
Can I say something, or don't we have any more time for us?
No, you certainly can say something. I just wanna go to Jeremy first, he was here first, hang on just a second, please.
I'm, I'm feeling like gravitating towards West College Neighborhood.
Yeah, okay, I, I think we could reach a consensus on that. And I'll go back to Rhonda for a final comment.
So, you know, those of us that live here, I think, like, what's the shortened term? We're not gonna tell everybody that we live in the West College Neighborhood. And I am sad that we have to define ourselves by the college. I would prefer West End or West Side. I think it's more urban, it is more universal. But if we have to, like, how do we refer to ourselves then? We, oh, come to the West College, West College Neighborhood, we have to say that every time? Or the neighborhood? Or I think, like, when you think of what you wanna call your neighborhoods, like where you live, whether it's, you know, Pine Grove Mills or wherever, I, I'd ask you to just think about it, you really lived here and you were telling people, you know, where you live, you know, I live in the Corridor, I lived in the mixed use, came to say it.
Thank you.
So just please think about, like, what you would wanna call your neighborhood.
Thanks, and I just wanna clarify, this is just the name of, the technical name of the zoning district. So, you know, it doesn't have to be a familiar name that, that residents over there are associating with. It's, you know, many people live in R1 or R2, you know, and they, they give their neighborhood. Or, you know, even in Pine Grove Mills, their, their zoning district is Village, you know, and they'll say Pine Grove Mills. So I don't want to, you know, to have that misunderstood that we're trying to, you know, to give a.
A neighborhood name.
A neighborhood name, this is, this is really the, the very technical.
I think I'm especially sensitive, because our little neighborhood here doesn't really have a name, our little two-street area. I really thought that you were like going to start calling it that. Although I know that the, the Terrace Support, I can't even say it, the other district, that was referred to that way a lot. So even though you might think it's not gonna be referred to this way, it may end up being referred to.
Yeah, I hear you, yeah, no, I, I hear that.
But thank you for the clarification.
Sure. So given that, and given that, you know, a little bit of clarification to West College Neighborhood, Neighborhood Mixed Use, West College Village, so. West College Mixed Use Neighborhood. I didn't get it, okay, not to the mixed use.
Not to the mixed use. That's a joke.
So.
It's a joke, that name is a joke. I wanna go to a place that's called Mixed Use. I walk the streets out here, and that sounds like a terrible place to visit.
Thank you.
It's a terrible place, Mixed Use State College.
Appreciate.
I thought that was a joke, to be honest with you, and it should be treated as a joke, that name.
Okay, so where are we at? I'll take a motion at some point, too, if we have, so we could tie that into the motion, because that wasn't identified in the last motion that brought forth these changes. So we could tie that into the motion. And I just wanna be mindful, too, we have the workforce housing change that needs to be incorporated with this. And I guess we'll likely see that since we tabled that the last item. So I don't know if that needs to be tied into this motion or not. I'll look to the manager for a suggestion on that.
We, staff already has it on the workload to, to do the amendment as discussed in the previous meeting, I would only, so, so no, you do not need to include it in the motion.
Okay, so, but we will put the name in this motion.
Yes.
As it moves forward, okay, so if someone wants to make a decision and move.
All right, here we go. I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors authorize advertisement of a, whoop, sorry, yeah, public hearing to amend Chapter 22, Subdivision and Land Development, Part 5A, Design Standards for Development in the Terrace Streetscape District, and Chapter 27, Zoning Part 304, Terrace Streetscape T S District, as well as officially call the district the West College Neighborhood.
Mr. Thompson will second that, that neighborhood, that motion.
Thank you, and further discussion on this item? Seeing none, I appreciate everybody's input and attention to this. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, so that moves forward. Thanks to everybody and the public for all of your time and effort on this, and this will move forward to a public hearing. So look forward to everybody in attendance at that one as well. Okay, so we'll move on to new business, and the first item is the consent agenda. Did anyone want to remove any item for discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull Item A for a point of inquiry.
Thank you, and we will move that to the immediate following item. And can I get a motion to approve the remaining item?
I approve the consent agenda.
And this is Matt, I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, and we'll move to discussion, discussion on consent agenda item A 2023-C5 Pipe Cleaning Contract Award.
Yes, looking over the contract award, I noticed that it is budgeted at $122,049 over budget. Yeah, it's that much over budget. I thought, I recalled from an earlier meeting that there was some negotiations on working that contract down to within budget, but I was not able to locate any record of that, and just wanted to get some clarification before we move forward.
Mr. Matt is not with us this evening. There, I don't recall the board having conversations about negotiating this contract item down. We put bids out and then we get the responses. They were higher than what we had anticipated with most of what we've seen come in. Are you referring, and forgive me what I will also say, I may not be recalling a conversation. But I recall that was the conversation regarding the PRP. Are you referring to the contracts that we issued for the Pollution Reduction Plan? I'm not sure that I recalled a conversation for negotiations to reduce the.
I had thought there was an earlier agenda packet that included the estimates, and somewhere in the narrative in the materials, it did show a revised price.
We, so the township recently opened the bids and received the responses, and what's provided within the agenda packet are the, the contract amounts that we received. So we, the township has not engaged in negotiations in response to the bids received for this particular item. We can table this for the next meeting, which would just delay the, the execution of the contract and the work. Unfortunately. Uh, unfortunately, Mr. Magica is not with us this evening. I can certainly do a little bit of exploratory in the next few minutes as the board continues with the meeting and follow up and discussion if I'm able to get a, an update.
So there does, in the memo, it does seem to discuss that
Yeah.
that there was a negotiation, uh, that occurred in order to try to, to bring a project under, within the existing budget. Both in terms of negotiating with the lowest bidding contractor, as well as reducing our scope, uh, in order to stay on budget.
Right. My apologies. It, so the Public Works Director did lead that conversation. You are correct. And, uh, I was not part of that negotiation, so I am unable to answer those questions. I can certainly suggest that if you'd like to table it, we can table it for a time that Mr. Magica is here. But our township engineer and our assistant engineer and our director of public works were taking the lead on this.
Yeah, I, I mean, I shared, uh, Jeremy's initial concern when I saw the numbers. But in terms of reading the memo, it looks like Mr. Magica has found a way with our engineers to keep this under budget. Although it will reduce the scope of what we get cleaned out. And as we heard earlier in public comment, we need to be focused on cleaning out, uh, our store rooms.
Right. So I'll look for either a motion to table or to, uh, approve.
I would, I would move to table the item.
Okay, is there a second? I'm not hearing a second, so I believe the motion fails. So do we have a motion to approve the item?
Uh, I move that we approve, uh, twenty twenty-three dash C pipe cleaning contract award.
And is there a second?
This is Matt. I'll go ahead and second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, thank you. And item number two, as I mentioned earlier, has been postponed to a future meeting. So we moved to, um, item C, and that's discussion on the Pennsylvania Municipal League's Resolution and twenty twenty-three policy statement to be considered at the twenty twenty-three Resolutions Committee meeting. Ms. Martin.
Yes, Chair. I, uh, will just acknowledge that provided with the agenda is a, um, a packet of the resolutions prepared by the Pennsylvania Municipal League for legislation that they would continue to advocate in support of the municipalities and the Commonwealth, as well as a policy statement, uh, that would be, that, that has been presented by the Pennsylvania Municipal League. And happy to answer questions to the extent that I can. But as the delegate, uh, on the, representing the Board of Supervisors at the Pennsylvania Municipal League's annual meeting, you will be asked to represent and vote on behalf of Ferguson Township. And so this evening, it's really an opportunity for the Board of Supervisors to discuss the legislation that's being presented. And any comments, uh, you will be able to take back and represent the board accordingly.
Thank you. And those are all included in the packet. If there is any discussion on any of those items, I mean, it's a bit routine, so it's, um, just so you have that, uh, kind of context around it. There were any concerns or anything that, um, any issues with supporting any of those, uh, you can bring that up now. And I think, um, there was a motion in here, so we could take that motion. If anybody would care to make it. And that could be restated to receive and, um, accept or authorize, um, the voting delegate to, uh, support the resolutions policy statement.
I would move that the Board of Supervisors move to receive and discuss the twenty twenty-three resolutions and the twenty twenty-three policy statement as provided by the Pennsylvania Municipal League.
This is Matt. I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? General support for those items, as I said, they're, they didn't change that much. They're generally, um, local use of radar is on there, um, some different, you know, some different things that we talked about a lot of, a lot of the time. And they adopted a policy statement, um, that's pretty consistent with things we generally discuss here. So. Okay, if, um, if there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. Okay, thanks very much. And we'll move to number four, establishment of an application period for upcoming vacancies as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three on authorities, boards, and commissions. Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Provided with the agenda is a list of the upcoming vacancies that are set to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three on the Township's authorities, boards, and commissions, as well as the representatives, the representatives for the authorities. Additionally, the board's policy on ABC appointments is also included for your review. The board is asked to open an application period for interested residents that would like to volunteer and serve on any one of the ABCs, um, have an opportunity to submit an application and be interviewed. The resident, or excuse me, the individuals with, that are currently serving on an ABC with terms set to expire December thirty-first will be contacted and asked if they're interested in serving another term. And if they are, they'll be notified, uh, with a date and a time to inter, be interviewed with the board and receive that same courtesy that all residents that submitted an application for consideration to serve on an ABC for the board.
Great.
So we're really just looking for the, the Board of Supervisors to authorize an open application period. And that would open October first and be extended until November first with the board to be, and, you know, scheduled to interview the candidates in early December.
Great, thanks very much. Okay, uh, would someone care to make the motion?
I move that the, this is Corey. I move that the Board of Supervisors authorize the Township Manager to open an application period from October first, twenty twenty-three through November first, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
This is Matt. I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Just, um, thank you for organizing this and, uh, appreciate your effort in that, uh, in that. So if there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. And we'll move to number five, discussion on Chapter fourteen, mobile homes and mobile home parks. And back to Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is a brief narrative that summarizes that the municipal code currently, uh, Chapter fourteen, mobile homes and mobile home parks, is an ordinance available for the township to, uh, provide some, um, enforcement and regulations that's been enacted since nineteen seventy, in the nineteen seventies. And while the township is not currently taking any action other than what's brought to the board this evening, which is to, uh, appoint an ex, uh, Mr. Walt Schneider, the Executive Director of the Code Administration, uh, to be the individual that would go out and perform a walkthrough or do the inspection in accordance with Chapter fourteen only. So this evening, the only action that's being asked by the Board of Supervisors is to appoint a representative to conduct the inspection, understanding that the ordinance does ref, uh, refer to the Board of Supervisors as the, as the, the party to conduct this inspection, but understanding that all five of you representing the board can't go out to either one of the existing mobile home parks or any future mobile home parks that would be constructed. You would not, as a party, um, be able to go out and conduct that. So designating that authority to, uh, appropriate individual like Mr. Walt Schneider, who's with us this evening, should you have any questions, uh, he would be the one that, you know, the staff is recommending that you would appoint to be able to assist in the process to issue a municipal license, uh, at, at any given point, um, should this ordinance be enacted and enforced.
Thank you for that. Okay. And that does, so it generally adds clarity to the ordinance. Okay. So would someone, um, we can do a motion, um, and then discussion and then, um, public comment? Unless someone would like to start with discussion first.
I move that the Board of Supervisors move to appoint Mr. Walt Schneider to perform inspections of mobile home parks situated in Ferguson Township. We were wondering if we could have a chance to have some public comment maybe before the motion was heard.
I'm, I'm amenable to that. If you would.
I would draw a motion.
Thank you. Okay. Any other board discussion before we go to public comment then? No. Okay, so we'll go to, in the, we'll go to public comment in the room first. We'll try to limit it to five minutes as usual. Please give us your name and your township of residence. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Dave Anglin. I live in College Township, but I'm here as, uh, Mr. Andrew Garbin's attorney. Uh, he just found out about this, uh, pro, agenda item. And he's concerned that he'd like things to slow down a little bit. He, we've heard a lot tonight about things being tabled. He'd like to table the motion, so he'd have a chance to talk to the township. I think from what I understand, there's only two of the mobile homes that fall under this. He owns one of them. And he would like to have the opportunity to meet with staff before we start down the road of having an inspector or anything like that to try to work things out. He, his position is that he essentially, we heard a lot of talk earlier about affordable housing. He essentially provides de facto affordable housing from that zero to, I'm not even sure what, I mean, his lot rent, I think he said is four hundred dollars. He has twenty-five trailers there. So there's a lot of folks that depend on that right now in the township, that if this is actively enforced and say he was to have his license revoked, we would not, we'd have twenty-five people out on the street. And he would like to avoid that. And he would like to have the opportunity, and I don't know what a reasonable table period is, to, to have a chance to meet with staff and to go over all these things. I believe there is another, uh, mobile park lot owner. I don't know if that person is here or not. But, you know, we would certainly feel they should be part of the discussion as well. And I know in, in looking at, I pulled the ordinance, I mean, it's, the initial ordinance was in nineteen seventy. So we've waited fifty years or a little more than fifty years. So our argument is we can wait a couple of months to try to work this out and have some discussions with staff. And I have Mr. Garbin here if he has any factual comments about what people pay and how many, you know, anything like that.
Thanks. And if you could please give us your name and township of residence.
Drew Garbin. I'm native. I'm from the village of Boltsburg. Harris Township. Uh, we've got residents here. You know, Nob Hill, Nob Hill's been an interesting experience for us. People are hardworking. They, they have a life there. Our fear is that somebody like Mr. Schneider comes in there and he's hard pushing, and I know that, and that's his style. And these people go from, you know, workforce housing to homeless. And that really is going to fly in the back of what all you people are talking about and saying. And, you know, that, that bothers me. Years ago, you know, Park Hills wasn't there. The family that owned the fencing area was the Kissinger family. They developed Park Forest. And for years, the Kissinger family took care of the fence. These, nobody in the room probably remembers. Okay? As it moved forward, the Kissinger family approached me about taking that plot of land. Didn't get done because of an attorney that, not David, that didn't get it done. So they went to the township. And I think you guys own it. But you guys came and pushed me on a, can't have a sight line and said, I own it. Somebody said, well, if you look in the CDT history, you guys had a flower, flower planting party down there about ten years ago when the, it became yours. Okay? And then we, through COVID, gave everybody a lot more leeway. And it got tough down there. Okay? And then you came after us about not taking care of the front of the park. Well, you guys planted everything. All right? As we go forward, uh, the fence got taken down. COVID, we got everybody to have more leeway economically, as well as what they did. Started to try and clean up. Chief, I think was a different guy, but we went and wanted to move fifteen cars, Rob. Police wouldn't help us, wouldn't even answer us. Say, we're not going down there. So then we go to the state police. They go, that's not ours. That's yours. Back and forth. So after a while, we feel like we've gotten no help, no voice, no, you know, trying to clean it up after COVID. Dumpsters down there, empty a lot of stuff. The residents did it. We provided the dumpsters, no charge. Just, let's clean this up. Let's mow more. We look at it, you know, at one point, we talked about trying to redevelop it. And we talked to Trish, which was way before any of you were here. She was the.
She was the planning director here.
We were working on a development, which isn't my gig, and there's a reason. It's not my thing. We've had some of them in the room today, uh, and said, why don't you double the residency and see what we can do there? Then she got let go or moved on. I think we're all missing a chance here to do something that could be good for the community. And I'm afraid we're going to run it over and have somebody come through there. If he has access to those, why wouldn't he have access to all your houses and say, that's not good enough? You can't live there. Seems a bit harsh. These are private houses, private homes. They rent the space from me to put them on. And I think you're barking up a tough tree. You're going to be known as the people. And I think it's a great cha, chance for Ms. Martin to be recognized as somebody who's really pushing workforce housing. Because the people that spoke tonight told you, you're not. And I'm, no disrespect to staff or what everybody else is doing in the committee, but those people actually do it. And if there's no money in it, they're not going to do it. You're going to end up being known as the people that took the people from workforce housing to homeless. And once you get the CDT and the XET going, they'll get all your names. They'll call you. It'll be like the borough where they have two half-million-dollar workforce housing projects going. If you read it, makes no sense. It's your chance to make sense. Do something positive. Give us some room. Give us six months to work with to try and make it better there. Give us some help where we didn't have help before, Chief. Ms. Martin, the same thing. We're not perfect. Yeah, we've done some things wrong. But these people who are, believe I'm here, can we get a hand of the people that are here? Made time. We gave them a letter this morning. Come out here. You've been sitting two and a half hours. This is their lives. You guys decided you want somebody in your house telling you whether it's good enough or not. Private homes. That's what these are. That's my thoughts. Any questions? I'll take.
Thank you. And we'll stay in the room for public comment. If you could please give us your name and township of residence.
My name is Reverend Dean Foster. I'm a resident of State College Borough, but I own one of those mobile homes. We bought it as a mission project to help a homeless family with a severely handicapped child. They were homeless when we first looked at the trailer. It was in terrible condition inside and out when we purchased it for probably a lot more than what it was worth. We fixed it up, remodeled the inside, put new appliances and stuff in it so that this family would have a place to live beside the street. When you start regulating somebody's life, it's getting to the point that you're trying to regulate all low-income people out of your area. If you stop and think, how would you like it if someone would come into your home and tell you that you have to leave your home and go back to live on the streets, especially with a handicapped child?
I'm sorry, if we could please have no conversation in the audience, because it's very difficult for us and for Sineet to hear the speaker at the podium. Thank you. Okay, I'm, I apologize.
I, I just want you to stop and think about what you're doing. I know that's not the best place in the world. I don't know Mr. Garbin other than I've talked to his secretary many times. We've had correspondence back and forth over the couple of years that we've owned this property there. There have been problems, yeah, but there's also problems with a lot of those people. They have nothing else to do. They have nowhere else to go. It's either in that mobile home court or on the streets. So stop and think about regulating people out of their homes. Stop and think what you're doing to destroy the people. These people are trying. This is the best they can get right now. Let them have it in peace. May God's will be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, others in the room for public comment. Okay, we'll go to Zoom if anyone had public comment. And I'm not seeing any. Okay, we'll go to board discussion at this time. Oh, I do see Pam, if you want to give us your name and township of residence again. And we'll just try to keep it to just a few minutes here.
It's Pam Steckler. I live in Ferguson. Well, my original question was about in the, oh, I have to remember what it, how it was, how it was worded. It said something about reasonable, inspected at a reasonable time, at reasonable intervals. I think you should probably get a little more specific about that. Because what's reasonable to one person might not be reasonable to another. Was there an idea behind that, like a yearly inspection or? And would the inspections be, would they be notified or would somebody just sort of pop in there and look around?
Thanks, and we'll go to the manager. And then we're going to go to board discussion just to clarify that language that's from the ordinance.
Thank you. I just first want to acknowledge that there were several calls today and I did return a few calls. It was after the five o'clock hour. I had a pretty jammed up schedule today. So beginning at about five o'clock, I made a few calls to residents in Nob Hill Trailer Park. And I was able to talk to quite a few of them and hear the perspective that they had in the interpretation of this agenda item, which really is varied from what actually is on for your, for your consideration this evening. I also spoke with the other, excuse me, the other mobile home park property owner. I believe his, he was here earlier, came in, introduced himself and actually left before the meeting got started. Mr., I believe he said Mr. Ralph Strauss. And I also spoke with his son-in-law who said he maintained that he was someone else on the list of phone calls that I made this evening. So I certainly have, you know, appreciated the opportunity to talk with folks that called in today and answer some questions and gain the perspective and understanding that this is absolutely something that is, you know, fragile and something that, you know, I approach with certainly a great deal of care. And I also recognize and validate the comments that have been said in terms of this ordinance is outdated. I mean, it's written several years ago. I would like to note that this evening, the board is asked only to appoint a designated individual to go out and conduct the, you know, I'm going to call it an inspection, but it's not, you know, the authority will not rest with the designated or the designated to uphold the code as it's described in the Center Region Code Administration Office. But rather to do the inspection based on what's in the ordinance for Chapter 14. There's very specific criteria that's identified that they're to observe and just be able to report on the conditions. Nothing outside of what's in the ordinance for Chapter 14. And that's when, if, you know, if and when the township would go ahead and move forward with wanting to, you know, initiate the process to assist the two existing mobile home park owners in obtaining a municipal license. So with that said, I just want to acknowledge and the board certainly can, within your motion, be very clear. And, you know, if you give the, if you designate to Mr. Walt Schneider, the executive director for the codes office, the authority to conduct the inspection on behalf of the board of supervisors. It's only in accordance with Chapter 14. Understanding much of what Mr. Garbin said this evening is that we do recognize that this is one of few areas that we would consider affordable housing as well as our other mobile home park site. That these are considered affordable housing. And the goal, as we do move forward, is to certainly provide that level of collaboration to work together to, you know, if in case an inspection takes place and a report comes back and acknowledges that, for example, in the ordinance, it says there has to be adequate and safe sewer functions. If there was in a scenario, a report that said that there needed to be an improvement, the position that I, you know, in facilitating this process on behalf of the board, that I would be recommending is that we work with the mobile home park owner to help get these improvements done. So in no way does this agenda item this evening suggest that we're going to initiate action immediately. It just acknowledges that at any given point, as the township moves forward and works with the mobile home park property owners, once we get to that step where there needs to be an inspection, to be able to issue a municipal license or to be able to work together to get those improvements made, to get to that end goal, which is to get the municipal license, you know, granted to the, to the mobile home park owner. That's, that's the goal. But this evening, it would start with the board just designating an individual. My recommendation is that it is Mr. Walt Schneider. I've had conversations with him. We both understand that, you know, that we have two mobile home parks here in Ferguson Township. And that to go through this process, we would, you know, we would at least have two inspections. I recognize the ordinance says that there could be these, you know, that the language is rather interesting. Intervals of inspection periods. I would be fine if the board even just, you know, designated Mr. Walt Schneider to do a one-time inspection so we can get through the process at some point when we're, when staff is prepared to enact this and facilitate this, that it would just be, we designate him to do the walkthrough to be able to inspect what, if any, improvements need to be made so we can get that municipal license granted. And I'll also just acknowledge that already this, you know, prior to the meeting after I had met, or excuse me, after I'd spoke to some of the individuals that called earlier in regard to this agenda item, I drafted a letter that I intend to work with the director of planning and zoning so we can get out into the property owner, excuse me, the mobile home park owners and invite them in for a meeting. Like that is the next step and talk a little bit more about what this process would look like and what the timeline might look like. So I just want to be able to share with the board and the public that there is no immediate action that will be taken, immediate action outside of this evening for the board to be able to appoint Mr. Walt Schneider to perform that inspection. And outside of an invitation to meet with both of the property owners. And then just scheduling that and kind of going through the process. Ultimately, we'd like to, you know, I think the township's position here is that we'd like to see, we'd like to just be able to follow the ordinance and facilitate the ordinance as we do all of our other ordinances. And certainly we recognize that this ordinance hasn't been, it hasn't been enforced in quite a while. So there's no expectation that there's a turnaround in a unreasonable amount of time.
Thanks for all that information. I'm going to open it up to the board at this point for discussion first before we go back to public input.
Can I ask a clarifying question? It's my understanding in reading this that the inspection is of the mobile home park and not of the individual mobile homes. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are requirements within the ordinance for water supply, electric supply to those pad sites. It is for the park, not the trailers.
And so is my understanding inspector would not be going inside of existing mobile units to do this inspection?
Correct.
Thank you.
So there was a discussion about there was two mobile home parks. My, my understanding from knowing some folks in one of the parks, my understanding was all those units were rentals. So one fell under the process of rental housing inspections, which I think are done like every three years?
It doesn't preclude them from being, from both ordinances being applied. So I think, I mean, I see what you're saying and that's what Mr. Strauss had also mentioned is that all of the, the, you know, the mobile homes and the lots are owned by the property owner. And if you read the ordinance, it, it doesn't, it would apply to both of the parks. At least that's the interpretation that staff has at this time.
Okay, and?
If I may, I think for me, this is all about building trust. And I appreciate Mr. Garbin, what you offered there. And for me, I would never want to see any resident put out on the street. And with that in mind, I'm wondering if there's a different way of approaching this to build trust between both you, Mr. Garbin, and the residents and the cog and the inspector. To have a conversation beforehand, to understand maybe some of the ground rules, to say, look, we're here to help and then enter into an engagement that is trying to build trust. I don't know how that can be done. I'm not, I don't have a solution. But I would maybe appreciate a stay on this to then enter into productive conversation with residents, with Mr. Garbin, with the mobile homeowners, with Mr. Schneider, to then come up with an agreeable plan for what folks feel is reasonable. Because people need to be living in housing that is safe. And I think having an inspector, I'm just going off the cuff here, touring, you know, a mobile home park, and I've walked through, I've been curious, that may see things or may question things, does not build trust without some understanding beforehand. So I think entering into some conversation is going to be the important first step. However, that might be done, I look for maybe solutions in there.
Jeremy, do you have something?
I, I would agree with Mr. Heller. I'm not necessarily a fan of just going right into like enforcement actions and whatnot when you don't know the backstory and there are other solutions. We don't want to necessarily kick people out of their homes. We want to be able to build that trust and be able to seek and find any assistance that they may need. So. Got a good point there.
Thanks. And before I comment, I'll go back to staff if you had anything to add. I thought you had your hand up. No.
Can I come back?
Yes, certainly.
I mean, I just asked a question, a little comment, which is usually my way. But I will just say that while the ordinance may be outdated, I think that the things that it asks for from a mobile home park owner are very reasonable. That there needs to be safe electricity, that there needs to be safe water, that there needs to be safe sewage. That these are things that I think that the residents of these units deserve. And so if we are, I understand and would also agree that I would like to find a path forward that builds trust in whatever process we go about enforcing these things. But I do think they need to be enforced. I think that it is, behooves us as the supervisors to ensure the safety of our residents. And I think in my mind, this ordinance is designed to do that. I do not want it to be enforced in a way, again, that would kick anyone out of their housing. Or that is not the, I don't think that's the intent of the ordinance or the desire of this board of supervisors. But I do think it is responsibility of the mobile park homeowners to do these things. And to make sure that they themselves are making, making sure that these things are in place, that are in this ordinance so that we don't have to go to enforcement mechanisms or have to go into the other things that are in this updated policy. But I think that our lack of enforcement is not a statement that the owners of mobile parks are off the hook for having to provide these things.
Thanks very much. I want to thank everybody who came and provided comment. And we'll go back to public comment when the board has had a little bit more discussion and just reiterate a lot of what the manager said in the care and caution that the board wants to exercise with any issue like this. And so I think you're hearing that from both the manager and the supervisors that there's no lack of concern here for any steps taken and how they would impact any residents. So just to be very clear on that matter, I think Corey raised an important point that it's an inspection of, should any inspection occur, it would be of the property as it pertains to these very specific elements of Chapter 14 and not of the homes themselves. So that being said, I think that having dialogue is an important part of this process. And I think, you know, whether we table this or not is almost aside from the point. I think that what I'm hearing is our understanding and assertion that, you know, what's outlined in Chapter 14 are some very basic provisions that people need to be allotted if they're paying rent somewhere, sewer, water, electricity. And so this is a very basic, it may be an old ordinance, but it's not, you know, it's still valid in my mind. So, but again, this is, tonight is not about that. It was just about appointing the persons, that it would not be the board to move forward with this. So that is separate. If the board wanted to move forward with that tonight, maybe there's some language that could be incorporated with that motion to further outline what kind of process we would want to see moving forward. So, yeah, I'd be open and maybe we can kind of consider where we want to go with that if, you know, if, and I can't get a sense yet of if people are more in favor of tabling this and reconstructing a motion and having more discussion or if, if the board is actually in favor of approving this motion with some additional language maybe. While we ponder that, I'll go back to some additional public comment to kind of keep the conversation moving. So if there is more public comment, I'd invite you to come up to the podium. Again, share your name and your township of residence. Yes, if you had additional comment, if you could please come back to the podium and just identify yourself. Our minutes keeper is on Zoom. So if you could please give us your name and your township again.
Andrew Garbin, still from the village of Boltsburg. I'd like to get Walt's thoughts. He's not said anything. That's one thing. Mr. Heller, I respect you all the way with what you said, you know. There is no trust. There's no, you know, half you people were copied on all the emails I got about parking and no help and this. I don't know all your names, but I'm telling you, you were. Maybe even before your time, Chief, I don't know.
But I appreciate you directing your comments to the board, to the chair at this time so that we're not engaging in a back and forth dialogue. So just if you wanted to share your comments on this item so that we can keep the conversation moving forward in a productive way.
Not sure I understand what you mean.
I'm asking you to get to your comment. And that's okay, but I think in your previous comments, you were really indicating some issues you had with either staff, people or some other persons on, around this table. And I'm asking you to direct your comments to me so that I can address anything needed.
Sure, I think you ought to read the ordinance so the people that may not have been able to read it but are aware of the letter we sent them this morning know what you're talking about. I think it's short sighted to think in a few moments, you guys can come up with some great ideas on a 50-year-old ordinance and correct it that's never been put into power, okay? I think we need 30, after 50 years of not doing it, maybe six months of talking about how to get there, what to do. The people have sewer, they have electric and they have water, okay? That's easy. The other side of it is the two trailer parks are violently different. The one owns the units and rents the units and they're inspected by cog. My park is, we own the pads, they own the units and they rent the pads. Two violently different situations, okay? And that's what I point out from my perspective. Did you?
Thank you.
I didn't know it was done.
I thought you were. You can carry on if you have additional comment.
I just think, and for the people, I really root for those people. And I just have fear that, starting with a report may be okay, but you're not sure what you want the report on yet. We've tabled everything but the name of a neighborhood tonight. This is a 50-year-old ordinance. Somewhere it's gotten traction and that's fine. Somewhere, we already started on a march to make things better down there. Dumpsters after COVID, removing cars, okay? I think you need to take a breath. No different than I thought. No different than I thought. The developers did a nice job, staff, respect. But those people are actually in that game. We're out there in the street doing this. And I think you'd appreciate it more, you walk through the park. These people are, they're making a life. That's what they're doing. And they ought to be allowed to without too many regulations. And.
Thank you. And again, we're not modifying the ordinance in any way tonight, just to be clear. This was, that is not what was on the agenda for discussion. So I'll look back to the board for thoughts on the direction. Again, I'm, you know, if we want to table this tonight, okay. If we want to move ahead and appoint Mr. Schneider in this role, if we want to add additional language to the motion, you know, we could have a little more discussion at this point.
This is Cory. I think I, I'm in favor of appointing Mr. Schneider as our representative in this regard just so that we, as we enter into any sort of conversations that we're going to have about enforcement, that we know is doing the enforcement and that he is at the table for doing that. I think that we can make it clear in the motion that we don't want him to be allowed to do the inspection until further notice. But I think appointing him as the person to do the inspecting, I, I don't have any issue with that. Because we're going to have to do that eventually anyway. And I think it would be good for all parties involved to know that that's the person who's going to be doing it so that they're engaged in the dialogues that we want to have before we say this is how we're going to move forward enforcing this or changing it even right before we enforce it. I think it, I think it'll be good to have him be engaged in that way.
Matt?
Ed, I appreciate your comments, Cory. I think for me, I'm wondering, again, when we go back to building trust from both sides, is there an opportunity that we maybe appoint Mr. Schneider to, to be involved, but also a liaison potentially from this board of supervisors to go ahead as a third party to be involved as well? To sit around the table and have the conversations, conversations, not inspections, but conversations, to then report back on a particular basis. Mr. Garvin had mentioned 60 days. Maybe it's reporting out at every township meeting where the conversation is going. Until such a point that maybe there's something that we say, you know, we, we don't know how to help. Or there are opportunities, or there are maybe, who knows? Maybe there's money involved out there that we can go ahead and get from grants to improve different things. But to have a third party, and maybe it isn't somebody on the board of supervisors, to sit down as a mediator or be involved, I think would be an important aspect of this, to, to enter into truthful dialogue. Those are my thoughts.
I'll look to the manager, I have, I'll look to the manager.
So, I mean, I, you know, the, the guidance that's been offered to council is provided in the agenda. And I would certainly, I, I agree with you Supervisor Heller that we sit down and have a meeting with the mobile home park owners. In fact, the letter that's already drafted that we intend to send out, that's where we would also, like, that, that's the next step, is to reach out and have these two conversations. But the first step would be what's provided, you know, the recommendation is provided in the agenda as, as advised. And I understand Mr. Garvin has legal counsel this evening. And I did receive a phone call and I, and I called, I returned the call, but it was, it was late. It was probably 6:15, 6:30 this evening. So, and, and quite honestly, my recommendation would be that if I'm going to have conversations with the party, it would be without, it, it, either our legal counsel would go direct with his legal counsel or of course, I would happily have a meeting with Mr. Garvin himself. So I would advise on the counsel that we received and just being able to advance forward. But I, I wholeheartedly agree with you in that, having an initial conversation with both mobile home park owners, just to talk a little bit about the history and talk a little bit about next steps forward and being clear about timelines and what it is and what it isn't.
And I'll go to Jeremy. Again, just to, you know, go back to the focus of the agenda item too. Your comments can be about whatever, whatever. My comment isn't about whatever you're going to comment on. It's just that this is just an appointment of this person to, should anything move forward. This is not about modifying or enforcing the ordinance. So I just kind of want to reiterate that at this point.
Can I, can I get an inquiry on, I guess, between what Mr. Gracie Griffith and Mr. Heller were thinking or envisioning of Mr. Schneider's role in this? Just so I make sure I'm following everything?
Sure, if I may, I can see these as two parts of a conversation, right? Mr. Schneider representing not only the safety of the residents, but, and also through ordinances, that, that safety, but also the, the other conversation with the residents as to their needs and understanding that as well as the, the mobile park homeowners. I would actually be in favor, looking at the recommended motion, is to potentially say to appointing Mr. Walt Schneider, if necessary, to perform the inspections of the mobile home parks. Again, putting some lighter verbiage in there to say we have to enter into a conversation where timelines and everything else are involved, but that we don't say to perform inspections. Because that opens the door for, again, it doesn't build trust for me.
I know, I want to be cognizant of the needs of, the needs of the residents. Depending on what the needs of the residents are, there, there may, may be resources that the township is able to help with or even direct them to, whether those be state resources or federal resources. So, yeah.
So I'll say, my concern is moving forward with anything that would displace these residents and, and overpromising anything that we can provide at this point in terms of grant assistance or, you know, I'm, I'm very concerned about that. So I, I, and I understand that this, the way that this motion reads is concerning to those living there. So I, I appreciate even that little bit of a suggestion on how to modify this. And I'm wondering if also we need to include some kind of time, timeframe in here so that it's not, it doesn't indicate anything immedi-, you know, I, I, I don't know what that language is going to be, but I just, I have, I just have concerns about, once we move forward with something, it doesn't necessarily come back to the board without it being in a, in a motion. And so I just want us to include everything in here and just kind of restate my concerns about, you know, anything moving too quickly. So was there additional language? I'll look to the rest of the board that you'd be supportive of including that you think would really convey the intent here in a, in a very clear way so that the manager can then enter into these discussions but without imposing some kind of, you know, imminent threat that something is, is very soon going to happen to these residents. So that's my, that's my concern at the moment with, with moving forward.
And Madam Chair, I appreciate that. So maybe if we appended at the end, something along the lines, you know, if the board so determines that inspections are necessary, he would be appointed if necessary, you know, tonight to that position, but nothing would happen. Right?
To be, to be appointed, should the board determine that inspection should be performed?
Something along those lines, yeah. And I apologize to Mr. Schneider. I feel like I'm referring to him like he's not in the room, so I'm sorry.
Thanks, if you want to give us your name and, I guess, association, township for residents.
I'm Walter Schneider. I'm your building code official. It seems to me that the board is unsure of what direction they would like to take. And you're discussing putting in all kinds of caveats. So my recommendation respectfully is, instead of creating a whole bunch of caveats that's going to have to come back and require board action anyway, my recommendation is you table the issue until such time the board has decided what direction they would like to take. Because you don't want to get into a position where you have to, again, take board action to redo what you're doing. So my recommendation is, we're here at any point in time to serve your interests and we're willing to do the inspections that you would want done under the ordinance, whatever form that is, be it in its current form or in a future form if you choose to amend the ordinance. And we're here to provide any services that I can through our agency. But by the time you get all the way through all these if thens, I think you're going to be back in front of the board to require board action again. And so at that point in time, my recommendation is to withdraw the issue or to table the issue until such time you kind of decide what direction this is going. That said, we are always happy, again, to provide whatever services you would like with respect to if you would like us at the table for the discussion. We are your SEOs and we are your building code officials. So we are happy to be at the table for any discussion and to be any service to the township that you would wish. But that's my recommendation. If you keep kind of going down that road of a bunch of if thens, it's probably going to at this point be easier to just table it at this point in time, but realize we're here at any point in time and the board action can be taken at any point in time going forward. So we're here as a service any way you wish.
Appreciate that. Thank you for that. And I think, to your point, I think the one direction I have heard is that we'd like the staff, manager and planning staff, and perhaps your involvement as well in discussions. And so perhaps the motion could be at this point to ask the manager to engage in discussions with the mobile park, mobile home park owners regarding enforcement of Chapter 14. It's a suggestion.
Is the manager going to do that regardless of us making a motion?
There are several considerations here on this conversation. So you may recall, there had been several inquiries that we fielded and communications to the board about options. And this is a step in forward. So I would look to the board too. And I, you know, I'm not too far off from where Mr. Schneider is. I think you as a board have to decide if you want this ordinance to be enforced. And if you do, then you need to, you do, you should designate someone to be able to provide the inspection should the township move in that direction and need to execute an inspection.
I hear that. And I think what I'm hearing from the board is there is interest in enforcing the basic principles of Chapter 14 and issuing permits at some point. Our concern and hesitation here is the immediate impacts of that and not having a hand in what happens after we leave here tonight. And so I think.
If the board, if the board's not ready to make a decision, then you can table it, understanding that there would be no action necessary at this time. And we can bring it back until you want to have further discussion. That's where I would stand. We have our solicitor, but our, this, our solicitor would not be providing comment on this matter.
Understood, okay. I'm going to go back to the board for some additional input. Matt, go ahead.
I, I guess my biggest question is, but does that move it forward? Does it move the conversation forward?
Is that with?
With residents and staff and those involved?
I'm sorry, which suggestion?
The idea of potentially tabling this for another time. Does that still enable us, do, do we still walk away here tonight with saying we're, we're entering into an engagement and who is?
Without having a motion and directing it? Okay, right. So no, there would be no further action if there's no motion?
I, I'm in favor of the motion as written. And I'm happy to be in the minority.
Jeremy and Matt? We're looking at the motion as written, an amended motion, an entirely different motion or table?
I, I'd be looking for a motion that gets us to enter into a conversation, whatever that would look like. And I don't know. So it's not tabled, but it, it again, moves this forward for a conversation. So I don't have those words, but I'm.
Yeah.
So that's, that, so something similar to, you know, asking the, the manager and staff to engage in conversations with the mobile park home property owners regarding Chapter 14.
And if you would, let me, I'm happy to meet and talk with them, but there's nothing to talk about because without having information to understand, I've never been to the site and I'm not an inspector. So I'm not in a position to just unilaterally or arbitrarily say, "This needs addressed." It's the inspection report that says things are fine or there's opportunities for improvement. Without an inspection, aside from a very nice pleasant, you know, meet and greet, there's not, there, there's nothing here for the ord-, the governance piece is missing. And so I'm happy, like, I, I want to be able to provide some clarity. It's not that I won't meet, meet with Mr. Garvin. I'm happy to meet with them. I have nothing to discuss in terms of the ordinance. It's a new issue. I've never been there and I'm not going to just suggest or believe there are problems just based off of what community members may or may not be saying. That would not be a good position for the township. Happy to have a conversation with the property owner, the mobile home park property owners, but there's not any conversation forward that would address any potential issues that could be cited in an inspection. Or maybe there is an inspection and there's nothing to discuss. I've not been there, so I can't speak to what conversation needs to be facilitated. So that's the, I guess, the reasonable piece of it that I haven't said explicitly. Sort of, that's helpful?
It's very helpful. And I think that brings us back to that amended motion that indicates maybe some timeframe, but appointing Walt and then adding in, adding in some kind of timeframe. I'd feel more comfortable with that, knowing that you're, and, and if it's helpful to incorporate any of that other language in there, you know, pending discussions, something to that effect with the property owners.
Yeah, once, the, the idea forward here would be if, should the board take action to appoint Mr. Schneider to perform the inspection? Once we get to that point, this week, I'd like to get a letter out just inviting the mobile home park property owners just to say, you know, we, we're happy to answer your questions. Staff had even discussed possibly doing like an informational fact sheet just to better identify like what, because we've had questions today. What, what is this inspection, right? And so it would just be exactly what's in the ordinance, not any other item. I understand code has a very thick book of different types of inspections. This would be very specific and, you know, would, would just be reporting on what's on, what's in the ordinance. There's no, again, there's no timeline here. As the board knows, the next 30 to 60 days with staff's workload alone, you know, really doesn't position us to, to, there's no, there's no desire here on the side of staff to expedite and move this to the highest level of priority with one caveat. And that's just an invitation to say, if you would like to meet one-on-one, let's meet. We're not talking about an inspection report. It's just more of, you know, what, what is a municipal license and what's the process? And staff would just discuss what's in, what's already itemized in the ordinance. And what's the process? And staff would just discuss what's in, what's already itemized in the ordinance.
Make this easier?
Uh, perhaps, but let me, let the, the manager conclude here.
So that, yeah, please, I guess that's just what I'm saying. If the door, if the board takes action this evening to designate Mr. Walt Schneider to perform the inspection, you know, that would just put it in motion for when that, when that part in the process was ready to be executed, we would get an email or a letter out to the property owners and say we'd happily meet with you and just do more of a Q and A and kind of come up with a timeline that works for staff. And, and quite honestly, I wouldn't see staff getting to where we were requesting for information any sooner than 30 to 45 days. And that's just getting the basic information, like the name, the address. And then after that, possibly scheduling if we get, if we get to that point in 30 to 45 days. But I can guarantee you, if we focus on just trying to get a meet and greet meeting in the next two to three weeks, then we have the meet and greet meeting and then it's, you know, let's get some information, we're looking at one to three months.
And that's actually what I was trying to craft something here. So your suggested motion plus inspections to be pending dialogue with property owners and not to be performed before whatever, three months, something like that. Okay. I want to go to the rest of the board before, um, public input. Do you feel okay about that? Is that?
Yeah, yes.
Because I, I under, I understand what you're saying about, um, yes, just the, the basics of this.
And a report could come back saying all of the, you know, the sewage, the electrical systems are all up, up to standard. They, they meet the basic standards as listed in the ordinance. And if that's the case, we will issue the municipal license and this is, the ordinance has been followed and enacted and it would be done.
Exactly. Okay.
I think the other thing that we need an inspection for is to understand what the ordinance is actually enforcing. Because it's, I've been reading the ordinance and thinking about the previous communications that we've received from concerned residents. I don't think that our existing ordinance takes care of some of the things that at least I've gotten messages about in terms of concerns. So, you know, I think there's also a stage for us to even, you know, potentially relook at the ordinance down the road. But again, I don't know that I can do that without also having an inspection that says, you know, if, if a park is meeting our current ordinances yet, we have residents that are, uh, still have safety concerns, then we need to revisit the ordinance.
And, and right now, that's not my recommendation. I think, I, I hear what you're saying. Maybe there could be more of a robust ordinance, but just based on the inquiries, what we have is, is basic and standard and that would be the only recommendation to, you know, as part of the process to obtain a municipal license, what would go out and just do the checklist as it's within the ordinance, which is relatively basic in comparison to what we see, uh, some of the other rental inspections. So I'm just acknowledging the board certainly could motion to do a modification of the ordinance, but I would, I would not do it as, I would not be recommending that we do it as part of this.
But it just speaks to the basic level of this ordinance too, I think. I'll go to Jeremy, if you had anything. Or Matt at this point, we'll take some final public comment and then I can reiterate what I said unless somebody else has a motion, but I'll take more public comment.
I'd be curious to see what you said, Madam Chair. And if I may, my, my concern also is we're getting into the winter season and I don't believe the ordinance as it's written is actually going to, unfortunately, protect citizens that may be running space heaters and other things in their mobile homes, which is another concern of mine. Um, so with that being said, because it does not include kind of the safety inside the home in many ways, I'd be curious again to see an extended period of time that we enter into dialogue.
Right. And that's, yeah, so I'll, I'll, we'll have that blank for, um, for suggestions. So, um, there was a request for public comment. I did not see who had that, but if there is additional. If you could please come up to the podium and give us your name again, please, for the minutes. Thank you.
Dave Engle, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Garvin, and I've talked with him about what you guys have been talking about. And he's certainly willing to have a meeting with Ms. Martin, maybe a liaison from the board, as well as Mr. Schneider and even to have his maintenance man, Rob, go out and actually do a site view. He is willing to do that. He would prefer that you table the appointment, but he, he certainly would, his biggest concern is that we get a meeting within the next couple of weeks and maybe even make it a site view.
Thank you. Yeah. And I think, um, I think that's what we're trying to generate here in the, in the crafting of this motion is to be able to move forward, um, with all, every, with all of these many elements in mind. So. Is there more discussion? Or someone interested in making a motion and what? I'm open to language. Um, just what I had thought of was the existing motion, inspections to be pending dialogue with property owners and not, uh, to occur before a parameter of time. The, I had said three months. I know that gets us to December, so maybe that's not ideal either. Maybe, as Mr. Heller suggested, maybe it needs to be a little bit longer. You know, whatever, whatever you think is, is appropriate there. If anybody else has feedback on Matt crafting of the motion, um, and a, an appropriate timetable. I mean, this is, uh, for, open for discussion. So six months, whatever anybody thinks is adequate and appropriate. So.
I, I think, you know, a reasonable timeframe might be the spring. Just thinking about getting out, seeing that, as well as, you know, understanding where this is going for all parties involved and having some time to think about it. So, um, maybe it's a March date.
So it put, put us at about six months.
Yeah, I, I would imagine any, if any inspection occurs or site visit, probably when there's not snow on the ground would be a little more ideal.
It gives that time for dialogue probably more than is needed, but it doesn't land us in, uh, in December and January to begin that process. And, you know, like Ms. Martin said, hopefully it, it is, you know, not complicated at that point and just proceeds and permits are, are issued and, and then we can go back and look at it further. But, okay, so if there's a consensus on, uh, moving forward with, um, a motion, um, if someone would care to make it.
You said it so well.
Sounds like a jerk and I'll make some of it.
Yeah. I'll state it again for you. And I'll just ask you to fill in the time, or I, maybe I know. Um, so the recommended motion is that the Board of Supervisors move to appoint Mr. Walt Schneider to perform inspections of mobile home parks situated in Ferguson Township. Inspections to be pending dialogue with property owners and not to occur before a period of six months.
So inspections not to occur before, uh, what was that conversation?
Six months of this date.
Oh, I'm sorry, with respect to the conversations with residents.
And not to occur. I was thinking months related to today.
Oh, no, I was just the, the part before that about the residents.
Uh, pending dialogue with property owners, um, and that might need actually clarification here. So the mobile park property owners, I don't want it to be construed in a way that it's, uh,
Mobile homeowner.
The mobile homeowner, is it, it's the mobile home park owner. And then not before a period of however many months, um, following today's date. If that's.
That'll be six months. It puts us in the middle of March, right?
Yeah.
From today. Okay. Let's go ahead and try this. Here we go. Um, I move that the Board of Supervisors move to appoint Mr. Walt Schneider to perform inspections of mobile home parks situated in Ferguson Township, pending dialogue with the mobile park owners and not before six months from today.
I would say inspections to be pending dialogue, so it doesn't read as it's the appointment to be pending.
Oh, okay. So the Board of Supervisors move. Should just write this out clearly.
I can state it and you can just say.
Let's do that.
You make the motion that I've stated. I'm looking.
I mean, I could just accept to the direction and I, I think I hear what you're saying, right? That you would like the, because I'm not sure I completely understand what's being.
So the motion is going to read.
To designate Mr. Walt Schneider.
Yes.
And.
To perform inspections, period. Inspections to be pending dialogue with mobile home park property owners and inspections not to occur before a period of six months from today's date.
Not to occur before.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if somebody wants to make the motion as I just stated, I think that's adequate. I'll ask the manager.
I'm going to type very slowly. Here we go.
So Matt, you can just say so moved.
Right.
Yeah.
So moved.
And then we'll ask for a second.
I, Mr. Thompson will second that motion.
Thanks. All, any other board discussion on this item?
My only point will be is that at some point, even if we were to table this motion, we are going to appoint Mr. Schneider to be the person to perform these inspections.
That is going to.
That is going to happen regardless of when we do it. And so I'm, given the language that has been added, I'm very comfortable doing it now. But we are guaranteeing that there at least will be a six months period in which no inspections will occur.
Correct. So this does the appointment, it, it's holds off any inspections and also includes a period of dialogue that will happen. Okay. There's been a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say no. Okay. No, I think that was the conclusion of that item, unless there's anything else. I really want to thank the residents and, um, owners, everybody who, um, offered comment. It's really, really appreciated and definitely helped us to, uh, be able to work through this item. And I think that was the conclusion of that. So, um, next we had communications to the board.
I received emails about, uh, the Terry Streetscape rewrite and support of our revisions. And of course, the long list of suggestions for names. Also received, uh, communications concerning the Wawa store.
Okay.
I too received, um, all those communications as well as another pertaining to the storm water, uh, the broken storm water pipe on Thrust Street, um, from, of course, Asher, who's joining us here. And I did forward that information, um, to the manager and staff, just so that they're aware.
Thank you. Jeremy, anything?
I had, uh, communications regarding the Human Relations Commission coral acres and the T S D rewrite.
Okay, thanks. I had, uh, communications on the T S D on Wawa. I had a person request that a sign be put in Cecil Urban Park that, um, dogs must be on a leash. So, um, I could ask that person to, I did ask them to just email that request in, but I'm sharing it now. Um, and then I've also had a lot of communications on food trucks and, um, I've mentioned them to the manager. And so, um, just kind of looking into what our permitting different, differences are with other center region municipalities to, uh, make sure we're not, uh, doing anything that's vastly different from anyone else. Okay. I think that was it for communications and we'll go to calendar items. Um, with a number of items on here, plus October 7th, Saturday is a coffee and conversation at Harner Farm, uh, at 8:00 AM. And, um, I think that was all that needed to be added. Okay. Okay. If there is nothing else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll move that we adjourn.
So moved.
And I will second and we're adjourned. Thanks very much.
Want to be Patty for the day.